I could do the certification and then turn it over to you. I need to certify closed.
Oh, I forgot about that. Yes, please go ahead, Dr.
No, you're fine. Absolutely. Let me just turn this on. I just had to turn on the light. It's getting dark.
Do we want to do a roll call first?
Yes, I'm just looking for my list here so I can call everyone. Okay, let's make sure I have everyone. Ms. Omeish, here. Ms. Tolan.
I'm here, thanks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Glad to be with everybody.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I'm here.
Mr. Fresh. Carl, you're on mute?
Hello.
Ms. Cohen.
Hi, I'm here.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, you are accounted for. Ms. Bukarski.
Hi, I'm here. Thank you.
Ms. Darnak-Kofax?
Afternoon, here.
Who am I missing? Who has not come in yet? Ms. Keys-Gamara, did I call you? Yep, I did. No, I think I have everybody. Thank you. At this time, in order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December 1, 2020, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. I see that we've, the motion's been moved by Ms. Darnak-Kofax and seconded by Ms. Omeish. All in favor? Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Marin, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. That is unanimous. Thank you. At this time, the meeting will be turned over to the meeting managers, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer and Ms. Tolan.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. So I appreciate that, and we're looking forward to a good discussion today around restraint and seclusion, our new policy. So I would like to sort of lay the groundwork for our meeting today. We will have the first round, we'll have a presentation from staff, and after that staff presentation, we will have a first round of board questions and comments, three minutes per board member. I would like to ask, since it worked, I think, fairly well in our last work session, that staff response in the first round be limited to two minutes. And I really would like to ask that only one or at most two staff members respond to a question unless absolutely necessary. This will give enough room for board member comments and discussion. I know there was some conversation about, we asked about public hearings, so Ms. Tolan and I thought we could address our desire for a public hearing during this three minutes and then address the public hearing question in between the rounds of conversation. So if unless there's any opposition to that, please go ahead and address your desire or thoughts around a public hearing during your three minutes, and then we can have that conversation in between before we go to the second round of questions and comments. I see some hands up. I don't know if that's hands to ask questions, or is that's hands to discuss the proposition around public comments? So if you could lower your hands unless they're to discuss the proposition on the public hearing, excuse me. Ms. McLaughlin, do you have a question about the public hearing, the procedure we're proposing for that?
No, no, I just.
That's why, if, that's why. Ms. Marin, did you have a question about the procedure, about having us comment on public hearing, and then we can discuss it in between rounds?
I have a question about procedure for this meeting, since we're starting late. Are we agreeing to end at a different time than was scheduled? Can we please clarify?
I don't know if we have an agreement. I think, you know, it depends on the, how long the staff presentation and board questions would go. So I don't know if we've previously done an agreement to end on the same time. I know we're going to try as best as possible to end on time, but I also know this is an issue that is of grave importance to our community and to our board members as well, so we want to make sure we have enough time for discussion. So having said that, I would like to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Braybrand and staff to go ahead and bring in the presentation.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, I'm not comfortable starting this meeting with not having a clear end time.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ms. Marin. We will end, we started half an hour late, so we will aim to end.
Excuse me, Ms. Point of Order, is that a motion? Is she making a motion? Because I don't know that we can entertain it.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, I was just saying, I'm going to make an effort to end half an hour late, because we started half an hour late. I wasn't saying that we affirm end time. But yes, that's a great point. Ms. Marin, are you making a motion to have?
Can everyone please stop answering except for the meeting manager?
Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Marin, please hang on. Ms. Marin, are you making a motion to have a specific end time?
I am not making a motion. As a matter of practice, we set meeting time and time, so I would like that to be clear, please.
Ms. Marin, I'm going to make every effort. Ms. Marin, I'm going to make every effort to end the meeting in the same amount of hours that this meeting was scheduled for, and Ms. Tolan will as well. I cannot guarantee that it'll end on time, but we'll make every effort to end within the timeframe that we had laid out.
Well, then, can I ask that if we're not going to end on time, can we please take a pulse of the board and then perhaps take a motion on how to continue?
Ms. Marin, we'll see where we are in the conversation at that point. I don't want to preclude board members who may be speaking in a second round at that point, but we can certainly take a look at it. I would like to go ahead and get started at this point. We will make every effort to end on time, but we will see where we are at that point. We're not going to make any guarantees, because this is an important topic that many of our public have been waiting a long time for. So having said that, Ms. Marin, Ms. McLaughlin, I think we will go ahead and start with the conversation, and we will just.
I just wanted to correct the timing. We started an hour late, so we're giving three hours to what we were originally planned for. It would be an hour from, it would be three hours, which is 5:30. I'm not saying we have to end at 5:30, but I wanted that clarity. It's not a half an hour late. It's an hour, so we have to mind for that.
Thank you for that clarity, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Marin, I did not, Ms. Marin, I did not recognize, Ms. Marin, I did not recognize you. I would like to go ahead and get started, because the longer we have this conversation, the longer this meeting will run. So we will make every effort to finish at the 5:30, three-hour time point. Dr. Braybrand, please go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer. I really appreciate the opportunity to come to this board today and share our updated policy around restraint and seclusion. This has been a topic, as you said, of great and grave importance to our community and to FCPS, and we are sharing with you an updated policy. We've looked at the new model state policy, and we're going to go above and beyond that policy, and we are going to begin to move away and embrace new best practices around restraint and seclusion that Dr. Boyd is going to talk about today, and we look forward to sharing this information with you and getting your feedback as we bring forth what we hope will be the very best policy for restraining seclusion to serve FCPS in the years ahead. So, Dr. Boyd, if you'd like to begin, and then we'll be glad to take questions.
Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon. Today, we will review the draft restraint and seclusion policy for Fairfax County Public Schools. The intent of this policy is to ensure students and staff are safe and to ensure that students are treated with dignity and respect at all times, to include the rare instances where physical restraint or seclusion is needed to prevent serious physical harm to self or others. Through the use of positive behavioral interventions and support, FCPS is able to support the majority of students' needs with the implementation of universal targeted and/or intensive supports without the use of seclusion or physical restraint. If behaviors need intervention to keep students and/or staff safe, the least restrictive intervention shall be used. This policy, proposed to be in effect January 1 of 2021, outlines information regarding the use of physical restraint and seclusion in FCPS as of the effective date. The draft policy reflects some changes from our existing FCPS guidelines as we evolve our practices to support students' dynamic social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Examples of change from existing guidelines and practice reflected in the policy include limiting the use of seclusion to three FCPS sites or 1% of FCPS schools, including opportunities for students to conference with trusted staff members following restraint or seclusion, and the incorporation of additional definitions that further specify narrow situations in which physical restraint or seclusion could be implemented if less restrictive interventions are unsuccessful, to name a few. It is important to know that FCPS's goal, to prohibit seclusion division-wide in a phased approach to ensure the provision of additional resources and support for staff to replace seclusion as an intervention in emergency situations where imminent risk of serious physical harm is presented, and to ensure the safety of all students and staff. Prior to reviewing the policy, we want to thank the stakeholders for their input and ongoing feedback. We continue to review feedback and consider the feedback as we refine the draft policy. Since posting the draft policy, we received additional feedback from stakeholders and have begun incorporating changes. For example, sector provided feedback regarding various sections of the draft policy in which language wasn't clear that it met the requirements of the regulation. In order to ensure the policy is abundantly clear to all stakeholders, we've gone back and added language to the policy for enhanced clarity that will be able to, that will be available in subsequent reads of this policy. Additionally, FCPS is in the process of working with the Fairfax County Police Department. The current NOU speaks to physical restraint but does not explicitly speak to seclusion. Additional language will be incorporated into the draft policy moving forward and prior to the Board's action. As we look at the items to be included during this presentation, we will talk about the required policy items, policy review specifically as it relates to seclusion, as it relates to physical restraint, policy details, areas where FCPS has exceeded the state regulation. We'll talk about stakeholder feedback. We'll look at some of our comparable school divisions and local school divisions and what's included in their policies or draft policies, and then we will return the floor back to the meeting managers to facilitate discussion and question. Virginia's school divisions that elect implement physical restraint and/or seclusion must develop policy and procedures that at minimum address five components. Those five components are: A statement of an intention that school divisions will encourage the use of positive behavioral interventions and support to reduce and prevent the need for the use of physical restraint and seclusion. Examples of positive behavioral interventions and support strategies consistent with students' rights to be treated with dignity and free from abuse that school division uses to address student behavior, including the appropriateness of effective alternatives to physical restraint and seclusion. A description of the initial and advanced training for personnel that address appropriate use of effective alternatives of physical restraint and seclusion, and the proper use of physical restraint and seclusion. A statement of circumstances for which restraint and seclusion may be employed and shall be no less restrictive than that set forth in the state regulation. The fifth element is notification regarding parent incidents regarding physical restraint and seclusion, including the manner of the notifications, documentation of physical restraint and seclusion, and continuous visual monitoring around physical restraint and seclusion, and last but not least, the requirements for rooms that would be used in cases of seclusion. A fundamental element of the draft policy that supports FCPS's vow to a caring culture for all is the commitment to implementing positive behavioral interventions and supports to reduce and prevent the need for seclusion and physical restraint. Targeted and intensive supports provided vary based on students' needs. However, examples of supports might include small or individual counseling, the use of check-in, check-out, restorative justice, conflict resolution, explicit social skills instruction. Those are some of the things that may occur above and beyond universal supports that are provided to all students at school, such as clear expectations and social-emotional learning instruction. We will now look at elements in the draft policy specifically as it relates to seclusion. As we begin the discussion about seclusion, it is important to know what constitutes seclusion. Seclusion is defined as the involuntary confinement of a student alone in a room or area from which the student is physically prevented from leaving. The definition addresses the who, where, and how of seclusion. Who: students. Where: a room or area. And how: alone, involuntarily confined, and physically prevented from leaving. The policy also includes non-examples of seclusion, as reflected on the slide, to include and in accordance with state regulations, such as timeout, in-school suspension, detention, students requesting to take a break in different locations or separate area, removal from a room or area for a short period of time to regain self-control so long as that student is not prevented from leaving, removal for disruptive behavior by a classroom teacher, and confinement alone in a room or area prevented from leaving during an investigation or questioning regarding violations of our students' rights and responsibilities. The definitions regarding serious physical harm and imminent threat are significant in our discussions of seclusion, as four of the five circumstances where seclusion could be implemented when less restrictive interventions are or would be deemed unsuccessful center on imminent threat and serious physical harm to self or others. Serious physical harm means bodily injury that involves substantial risk of death, extreme pain, protracted and obvious disfigurement, or protracted loss or impairment of the function of a bodily member, organ, or mental faculty. For this policy, serious physical harm is synonymous to serious bodily injury. An imminent threat exists when a person or situation appears to pose a clear and imminent threat of serious violence toward others that requires containment and action to protect identified or identifiable targets, and may also exhibit utter concerning behavior that require intervention. For this policy, imminent risk is synonymous to imminent threat. While the definition of seclusion addresses the who, where, and how regarding seclusion, these two definitions are instrumental in consideration of when seclusion could be implemented if less restrictive interventions are unsuccessful or be deemed to be unsuccessful in a given situation. FCPS was intentional and explicitly defining serious physical harm and imminent threat to ensure stakeholders, students, staff, families, and our community members have a common understanding of the rare circumstances when seclusion could be considered. Later in this presentation, we will review in detail the circumstances for which seclusion could be implemented. As shared in our Oak Main comments, the proposed policy will permit seclusion at Burke, Key, and Kilmer. As FCPS works to phase out the use of seclusion rooms across the division as we evolve our practices to meet the dynamic needs of students, we need to do so in a strategic manner to ensure the provision of additional supports and resources to ensure staff and students are safe. During the 2020-2021 school year, effective January 1, 2021, FCPS will prohibit seclusion in 99% of our schools, including comprehensive services sites. Increased professional development and coaching will occur this full year to support the prohibition of seclusion at those schools. Additionally, Burke will be prioritizing the Ukyro system this year as an additional resource to support future prohibition of seclusion at that site. The Department of Social Services, in collaboration with stakeholders, will develop a multi-year plan that outlines the phase-out of seclusion for the three remaining schools that would ensure additional supports and resources are provided to school staff to ensure safety of students and staff when presented with imminent risk of serious physical harm in the absence of seclusion. Per state regulation, this policy will be reviewed annually and updates made as appropriate, which would allow FCPS to amend and extend the extent to which seclusion is permitted at least once a year. Seclusion is only permitted at, again, at those three designated sites, and it would be permitted within the reasonable judgment of particular personnel ineffective and only for five strategies outlined in the policy in accordance with the state regulations. Only trained personnel with advanced training would be permitted to engage in seclusion, and parents would be notified of any instance of seclusion. Additionally, only staff with the focus skills, additional advanced training, that focuses on skills related to positive behavioral support, conflict prevention, de-escalation, crisis response, and regulations and professional development regarding the regulations of policies and procedures governing the use of seclusion will be permitted to implement seclusion. Thank you. School-based, the draft policy includes monitoring and accountability processes to ensure compliance with this policy. Both the principal and central office representatives from various departments will be reviewing data relative to seclusion. The principal or designee will review the incident with staff involved within two school days of the incident, and school administration and central office staff will review data on a quarterly basis. In addition to reviewing information regarding compliance, the central team will also look at other factors such as trends and demographics to inform the level of support needed for schools. In order to ensure students with two or more instances of seclusion or restraint in one year are supported, school-based teams will meet to discuss the incident and will consider the need for additional support, such as a functional behavioral assessment, behavior intervention plan, additional behavioral goals, additional evaluations, and/or reevaluations. The seclusion rooms at Burke, Key, and Kilmer meet the structural and physical standards outlined in the regulations, and in the rare instances that seclusion at those sites is needed, it would only be permitted in those designated rooms that meet the specifications outlined in this policy. More specifically, the rooms designated for seclusion at Burke, Key, and Kilmer will be free of any objects or physical features that may cause injury to the student, have sufficient dimensions, and still have sufficient lighting, heating, cooling, and ventilation to comport with the dignity and safety of students, and will have windows constructed to minimize breakage and otherwise prevent harm to the occupant. Thus far, we reviewed the information specifically as it relates to seclusion as permitted in accordance with the limits of this policy at the three sites. Now, we will look at policy components as they relate to physical restraint across the school division. Physical restraint is a personal restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move freely. It does not include briefly holding a student to calm or comfort the student, holding a student's hand or arm to escort the student safely from one area to another, or use of incidental, minor, or reasonable physical contact or other actions designed to maintain order and control. Again, FCPS is committed to using PBIS to reduce and prevent the need for physical restraint, and its physical restraint is only permitted when other interventions are or would be in the reasonable judgment of school personnel ineffective and only for five reasons outlined in this policy that will be reviewed in detail shortly. Like seclusion, four of the five situations where physical restraint could be considered involve circumstances when there is imminent risk of serious physical harm to self or others. FCPS will continue to ensure that only personnel with advanced training are permitted to engage in physical restraint in the rare instances where it may be needed. Currently staffed or trained in MANT system and PCM, FCPS staff will continue to ensure that evidence-based training programs are used and that training focuses on positive behavioral supports, conflict resolution, de-escalation, crisis management, and regulations, policies, and procedures governing the use of physical restraint. Also like seclusion, parents will be notified of any instance of physical restraint. School-based administrators will, within two days, two school days, review the incident with staff to ensure the physical restraint was compliant with policy. School administration and central office teams will review the data around physical restraint on a quarterly basis to ensure compliance and to identify trends and determine additional levels of support. And last but not least, school-based teams will meet to consider the need for additional supports for students who have two or more restraints or seclusions in one year. And the next section will review policy details that apply to both restraint and seclusion, and will look at areas where FCPS's draft policy exceeds the requirements outlined in the regulations governing the use of seclusion and restraint in public elementary and secondary schools in Virginia. During the overview of physical restraint and seclusion, I referenced that there were five circumstances where physical restraint or seclusion could be considered, and shared that four of the five circumstances are grounded in the caveat of imminent risk of serious physical harm to self or others. Let's now look specifically at the five rare circumstances where physical restraint or seclusion could be considered. Physical restraint and seclusion are only permitted when other interventions are or would be in the reasonable judgment of a particular school personnel ineffective and only to prevent a student from abducting serious physical harm or injury to self or others, to quell a disturbance or remove a student from a scene of a disturbance in which such student's behavior or damage to property threatens serious physical harm or injury to persons. Unless a student's damage to property creates an imminent risk of serious physical harm or injury to students or others, the damage of property does not itself indicate imminent risk of serious physical harm or injury and shall not be the justification for restraint or seclusion of a student. Defend self or others from serious physical harm or injury, and finally, obtain possession of controlled substances or paraphernalia which are upon the person of the student or within the person's control. Obtain possession of weapons or drugs or objects that are upon the person of the student or within the student's control. Given the importance of the open communication and homeschool partnerships to support student success and in accordance with state regulations, communication protocols are required in instances of physical restraint and seclusion and are also reflected in the draft box. On the day of a physical restraint or seclusion, school personnel must report the incident and any related first aid to the school principal or designee. Also, the principal or designee must make reasonable effort to directly contact the parent to notify them of the incident and any related first aid. Our current language in our draft policy indicates specifically that the school principal or designee or other personnel shall make a reasonable effort to ensure that direct contact is made with the parent either in person or through telephone conversation or other means of communication authorized by the parent, such as text, voicemail, or email to notify the parent of the incident and any related first aid on the day the incident occurred. We understand the importance of timely notification to families, and we continue to work collaboratively to support student success, and we plan to revisit some of the language in our draft policy to strengthen the expectation regarding same-day notice. No later than two school days following physical restraint or seclusion, school staff involving the incident or other designated personnel shall complete and provide the principal or designee with a written incident report. The school division shall provide the parent with a copy of the written incident report. The principal or the designee reviews with all staff involved who implemented the physical restraint and seclusion. They review the incident. And last but not least, with a trauma-informed lens, the principal or designee shall review the incident with the student. Within ten school days of the second physical restraint or seclusion in one year, no later than within ten school days, for students with an IEP or a 504 plan, the IEP or 504 team will meet to consider an FBA, a newer revised BIP, newer revised behavioral rules, and additional evaluations or reevaluations. Additionally, all other students, a team to include the parent, would meet to consider an FBA, a newer revised BIP, or a need for a referral for evaluation. an FBA, a newer revised BIP, or a need for a referral for evaluation. As soon as possible following the physical restraint or seclusion, a student would be able to, again with student support, conference with a trusted school personnel. We continue to have ongoing conversation and dialogue with stakeholders around that element. The intent of this component is to allow students to select a staff member of their choosing whom they have a strong rapport to debrief, process, or obtain additional supports. The desire is to have the conference conducted as soon as possible, however implementing some timeframes may limit the student in accessing a preferred adult, especially if the preferred adult is an extender staff member. The team will continue to seek solutions to strengthen the language regarding the timeframe while still providing enough flexibility to allow students to access their preferred or trusted staff member. Now that we've reviewed the policy components as it relates to restraint and seclusion, we want to take a look at areas within the draft FCPS restraint and seclusion policy that exceeds the state requirements. In the area regarding written notification of physical restraint or seclusion to be provided to the parent, the state requirement is within seven calendar days of the incident and the FCPS draft language is within two school days of the incident. This written notification in this section is specific to the comprehensive incident report. Based on additional feedback from stakeholders regarding the potential delay in the written report should a restraint or seclusion occur before a long break, given the timeline refers to school days, additional language will be incorporated to provide timelines should restraint or seclusion be implemented prior to extended school breaks. The next item in the area of full review of the physical restraint or seclusion data, the state requirement is that that would occur regularly and in FCPS's policy, we wanted to strengthen that to make it more clear and explicit, and we have listed that this must occur at least quarterly. Any area of division-level review of physical restraint and seclusion data, our state requirement indicates that that must occur via an annual report to the superintendent. And in our FCPS policy, in addition to that annual report, quarterly review will also be done by the Department of Special Services and other central office departments. And last but not least, relative to student conferencing with the trusted personnel, that is silent in the state requirement that we've incorporated in our policy, and again, we will continue to work through language strengthening the timeframe. On the screen, you'll see a list of recommendations that were met or partially met based on feedback from various stakeholder groups. The first is student conference with the trusted personnel. Use of seclusion is limited in FCPS. Implementing a chain of interventions prior to restraint, such as implementing less restrictive interventions first, which is consistent with our current practice, expanding contact options to notify the parent of the incident on the same day, and DSS conducting quarterly reviews of physical restraint and seclusion data. One recommendation that was not explicitly listed in the policy but is a part of our system structure is support for staff's emotional well-being following physical restraint and seclusion. All of our staff have continued access to EAP should they desire to access it as a support mechanism following restraint and seclusion. Stakeholder recommendations that were met or partially met, and the recommendations here are recommendations that were referred from feedback from stakeholders but are also requirements in the state regulations. So that's a team to include a parent, to meet to discuss additional supports needed should students have two or more restraints or seclusion in one year, and only staff with advanced training to be permitted to incorporate restraint and/or seclusion, which again is consistent with our current practice. Stakeholder recommendations not incorporated, providing a behavior intervention teacher at each school. This was not incorporated in the draft policy as it represents today, as it has budget implications, but we certainly want to look at our current resources to see how we can maximize those and then to have additional conversations later as to whether additional support staff are warranted. The second piece is prohibiting supine restraints. As of since the posting of the F policy, the team has continued dialogue regarding supine restraints and will be modifying the draft to prohibit the use of supine restraints with the implementation of this policy on January 1st, 2021. And again, that additional change was subsequent to our posting of the draft and it will be reflected in subsequent reads. Requiring written notification to the parent on the same day, we're going to continue, as noted in earlier conversation, continue to seek solutions that would address the desire to have same-day written notification in addition to same-day notification via other methods such as phone calls or voice messages. Removing doors from all seclusion rooms are custom doors designated to keep students safe and minimize the risk of harm to students and staff. So the seclusion doors will be maintained in those three locations where seclusion is prohibited in those rare instances that we've reviewed today, but all other seclusion doors will be removed prior to our policy going into effect January 1 of 2021. To include and as representative of our doors that are at our comprehensive services sites. In order to foster the safety of all students and staff and to assure implementation fidelity of the draft policy, FCPS will provide tiered supports to schools to provide increased universal professional development regarding PBIS, including conflict prevention, de-escalation, crisis response, and information regarding our regulations, policies, and procedures governing the use of restraint and seclusion. Additionally, other targeted interventions and intensive support will be provided to schools through coaching, use of intensive support teams, and crisis response teams as determined through data-informed decision-making processes. As we've developed our draft policy, we did explore a number of school divisions' policies as to what's included in their drafts regarding restraint and seclusion. The divisions listed here were selected based on comparable size, geographic proximity to FCPS, and/or those who have public separate schools within their divisions like FCPS. As noted, some of the policies listed are in draft form and may have subsequent changes prior to adoption. This information represents a subset of what is included in policies in various in-state and out-of-state school divisions. However, other divisions have differing positions regarding restraint and seclusion. FCPS is committed to creating a safe learning environment for students and staff that is anchored in the caring culture. FCPS is working to phase out seclusion in our schools and begin that process this year. Additional supports will be provided to support students and staff as we evolve our practices to meet the dynamic needs of students. Thank you for your time, and we now turn the meeting over to the meeting managers for
Thank you. Sorry, I have a little trouble getting my mic to turn on. I appreciate the presentation, Dr. Boyd. And before we get started with board member questions and comments, I just want to remind us that please, board member questions be limited to three minutes and staff response, I would really appreciate one or two staff members responding in two minutes so we can keep the conversation flowing. Please try to give your remarks regarding a public hearing as well in this initial three minutes and we'll take up that topic after the end of our first round. So having said that, I will start with Ms. Corbett-Sanders first.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Boyd, for your comprehensive presentation. It is probably the most difficult policy discussion that this board has before it. And I would like to better understand why we don't have a more robust capstone statement at the beginning of this policy, which actually addresses our vision and our emphasis on positive behavior supports, multiple tiers of supports for our students, and having a trauma-informed care environment for our students and staff. And with that as being the capstone of what I would like to see, which is more on focusing on behavioral supports and recognizing that many times students have a communications challenge in better understanding what is the provoking situation that frustrates the child in such a manner that they communicate in a way that is hard to understand. So I would like to better understand if we can add more upfront about those philosophical supports. And then along those lines, I am glad to hear that you are adding supine restraints as a prohibited behavior or prohibitive action. But on page nine, when we talk about putting a team together to address an intervention only after a second event, and so, page nine of the policy, I would like us to be looking at that as something that takes place anytime there is an event because it is critical that we understand what is happening and how to best support the needs of these children. And if we could also better understand why we don't have any reference to timeout rooms or calm-down rooms. And then in the section on training, I would love this to be a bit more explicit about the training for trauma-informed care, multiple tiers of support for our students, and positive behaviors, and a requirement on an annual training plan for any teachers that are staff that are likely to have to rely on this policy. And then my last question is whether or not there is something that we can do to put with the reporting piece, rather than the reporting only going from the principal to the superintendent and then to the state organization, I believe that there should be reporting to the school board on a either quarterly or annual basis, as well as having the school board review those documents. Dr. Brayren, you look like you're ready to respond?
Well, I know Dr. Boyd will have a couple of points. I'll make a couple of comments upfront. I do think we could put some additional language around our philosophy to pivot away from restraint and seclusion in our school, which Dr. Boyd talked about. You're talking about in section one of the policy under purpose about really expanding our philosophical commitment to move away from those practices to the very greatest extent possible and phase out seclusion in our schools. That's what I hear you saying, and I believe Dr. Boyd will, yeah, will support that. And then the other one, which I'm gonna let her do some of your questions in the middle. Your last question's about section 11. There is some language there that says the information shall be made available to the public, and we can be clear there about to the school board and the public as part of the reporting structure to the division superintendent. We can go back and look at some language to make changes there as well.
Excellent, and then my last piece is really having a more robust discussion and commitment to the professional development and training.
Yeah, let me let Dr. Boyd talk a little bit about the training, and I think she is going to tell you, I know she's going to tell you, that this is a key component. No policy is going to be effective unless we have the proper training to be sure it's implemented with fidelity. So, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, thank you. First, to go back to your initial questions, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, we can certainly add that additional language around timeout. That was some of the feedback that we got from stakeholders and as part of the work that we've done subsequent to getting that, that will be incorporated into the subsequent drafts of the definition of timeout will be added. Again, to clarify, because it's listed as something that is not considered seclusion, so we want to make sure persons are clear on what timeout is, so we will be adding that. But also regarding the professional development, we are going to be working collaboratively with a number of departments because as we talk about multi-tiered systems of support to support students, we're looking at PBIS, but as you said, it identifies the behaviors and manifestation of skill gaps. And so this behavior may be a manifestation of a social skills deficit or an academic challenge, and so we're going to need to collaborate to make sure that while we're building up students' abilities to re-regulate when they get escalated, that they're also addressing those skill gaps with our academic partners in the Office of Instruction and also our partners in school support. And also one of the departments that we'll be collaborating with as we look at our quarterly data is our Equity Office, because we also know we want to make sure that certain groups aren't disproportionately impacted, and if there are, we want to be able to provide additional tiered intensive support for those schools. So we'll be sure to add some additional information and bring that forward.
And so those are our next steps, and if I have to put them in writing, I will. But then the last piece is a clarification, because I know that we often place students in schools that are not Fairfax County public schools. And is it the intent, because it would be my intent, to have this policy applied to any sort of outsourcing situation as well?
So the state regulations and subsequently our policy applies to public schools, public elementary schools and secondary schools, and is not applicable to private schools. But our long-term desire is that if we can provide support for students, we may be able to bring some of our students back to our schools and not be in those private placements. So again, that they will be impacted by the policies that we set forth as a school division.
But, so here's a question, and maybe, I don't know who answers it, but can't we, from a contractual point of view, we can always put into contracts with vendors, which include these schools, these requirements? So the state doesn't apply to it, but it allows us to.
And this might be where Mr. Foster may want to weigh in. I certainly don't want to speak out of my wheelhouse as our legal counsel, but I definitely understand your position, though. Yes, ma'am.
So John, I think the question is, can we require the related service providers or private placements to follow our policy around restraint and seclusion after these are adopted?
Yeah, we can certainly look into that issue, Madam Chair and Ms. Corbett-Sanders, but as a general matter, yes. I mean, as Dr. Boyd noted, it's a matter of contractual relationships and terms.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. Would you like to go back?
I'd like to listen to the conversation, and I may have a go-back.
Great, thank you. All right, next I have Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you. Dr. Boyd, thank you for this work, and I know you, you know, are coming in, helping us to grow in this area. And I do think one of the general areas where we're really trying to work, and I believe this is the goal of everyone here, to build stronger trust with our community, build a stronger partnership with our parents, between our parents and our schools, staff members. And so with that in mind, I would like to, you know, I see you saying you're going to work on the notification issue. I'd like to ask you if there are other recommendations you might have to specifically assure our parents that we are working toward that balance. This is what I'm hearing, we're working toward that balance of protecting all students, creating a respectful learning environment, protecting staff, and only using these situations, you know, really trying to make sure that we are not using this unless it's absolutely necessary. That's what I'm hearing you saying, but I'm wondering, A, how are we monitoring that? And B, how can we have the level of outreach with our community so that we can continue to build trust?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. You know, we established the state regulations don't define serious physical harm and don't define imminent risk, and we thought it was extremely important to really put a very stringent threshold around those very rare instances where that could occur. Part of the new policy requires school-based administrators to review each circumstance within two school days of the incident happening. So part of our charge as central office teams is to really make sure we provide that ongoing professional development and coaching so that our school-based administrators continue to build their knowledge so that they can monitor and evaluate the appropriateness of these rare interventions and their use of those interventions.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? Because that's a really key point in my mind, because I think parents are concerned, if a child has an experience in school on a particular day and they don't find out about it until two days later, they will have missed an opportunity to implement interventions or support at home for that child as a result of that. for that child as a result of that experience. We may be dealing with a child who is nonverbal or unable to communicate in the traditional ways. And that makes the urgency of communicating this and having support, yes, in the school, but also for the family even more important. So I will say, I want to say that that is a particular concern to me because what it may do is pile on to a problem for a child. And I know that's not what we want. So, you know, what recommendations are we going to have to our staff members? And procedures to try to prevent building up that type of harm?
Sure. And I think, again, you know, as we shared earlier, we're, this is one of the pieces that we're continuing to have ongoing dialogue with both our parent communities and also our teachers and administrators. And I think in many instances, communication is able to occur on the same day. We're just trying to make sure, because when we put in a policy, it can't be many. It has to be, this is what must occur. And so we just want to make sure, again, it may be a rare incidence where something happens at the end of the day, and you're trying to, you know, get everyone safe and organized. We just want to make sure that the policy is, takes into consideration those rare situations, John, a teacher involved in this, I have to pick up my child from daycare at five o'clock, I'm trying to get mom, all these different moving dynamics. But at the same time, trying to balance it with, we certainly do understand parents want to be informed. You brought up key pieces with some of our students are nonverbal. But even for our students that are verbal, as a mom, I know I would want to know. And so that's what we're trying to work out, that balance of how do we take into consideration both pieces to, to make sure that we have that clear communication. So we're continuing to work, and it is high on our priority list.
So continuing to work, and I don't mean off the rest of your answer, but I don't want to miss this. I'm sorry. I know that ACSD has communicated with a number of board members and probably you about their involvement in that process. Will they be a part of that continuing of, of work to make sure? Because I think what would be more assuring, reassuring to parents is that rather than preparing for the exception to the rule, but to create a rule of thumb where a parent could rely, or if something happens to my child, I have an opportunity to, to deal with that.
Yes, the answer to your question is yes, they will be involved in the communication. I seen Mrs. Seismar Heiser at the time, so.
That doesn't cut off your answer.
Please go ahead. Dr. Boyd, put an answer if you have more to say to that last question.
We're certainly going to include them in ongoing conversation. And we may even have some opportunities for some of our staff, administrators, and parent groups to sit down together. Because I think everyone sitting at the table, working together, may be an opportunity for us to create a, an optimal solution to, to the, again, common goal. There's common goal is how do we get there? But yes, they will be involved.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamar, would you like to go back?
I do, but I just want to, I'm wondering if that, I, and I want, I don't want to clash with Ms. Corbett Sanders' next steps. But if that's not a next step for her, then I'll make it one for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just a reminder, Ms. Mulberg has posted the next steps link in our chat. So you can go ahead and add your next steps to that if you like. Next, we have Dr. Anderson. Dr. Anderson, you're muted. We can't hear you. We can't, we still cannot hear you, Dr. Anderson. Let me, if you don't mind, I'll let Mr. Frisch go ahead of you. And then if you want to call me, we can do it that way. Mr. Frisch, go ahead.
I'm not muted anymore. Always start that way.
I was about to say so.
So I just want to, you know, take a few seconds at the top here to talk about how we are, why we're here and how we ended up at this point. Typically, you know, board policies are developed through a process that provides for greater deliberation. You have a meeting of the Governance Committee, which will consider draft policy or policy changes, that then sends it onto a work session, and then finally it goes to the full board. And, you know, as we've heard today, you know, the state essentially required a change to the policy by the end of the year. And they made that requirement in July. I hope one of the lessons learned coming out of this process is that on issues of such great importance like this, that giving us one month to hammer out the necessary policy is not sufficient. And it's, it's a disservice to this board. Frankly, it's a disservice to staff who spent a lot of time working on this over the last few months without having an opportunity to hear directly from stakeholders and from the board before we arrived at the policy being posted on the 30th of November of a holiday weekend. So I will just put that out there. Hopefully, we are still able to get where we need to be. And to that end, for me, I'm glad that we are, you know, changing the policy further before, even before this meeting to ban supine restraint. I'd like to see the same thing happen with seclusion. To that end, I have a question. And perhaps someone on staff can answer it. What is particularly different about Burke, Key, and Kilmer that we would continue to allow seclusion there and not at every other school in Fairfax County?
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, I'm sorry. It just takes a minute for my camera to keep going.
And Carl, Mr. Frisch, I wanted to say, that did do a great job, and I'm responsible for working with the board to counter this. We've had a lot on our plate. It did come too late.
Oh, for sure.
Responsibility for that, so.
No slack on anybody's, I know everybody's working hard. I just want people to know why we're doing it now on the first day of December in the month that this policy has to be finished.
Sure, sure. And, and, and July, when the state did drop the model policy, we were in the middle of the return to school deliberation. And, but it's a fair piece of feedback. And what we want to do now, and we're taking the feedback to make sure the policy the board has when you review it on December 17th reflects the will of the board and, and the feedback from the community. And I know.
To that end, one of the things that makes this particularly difficult is that everything gets bunched up at the end of the year, right? We're trying to get all kinds of things done before the end of the year. So, you know, I would hate for anybody to look at this and think that the issue is getting short-thrift because of the timing, because it deserves our full attention. I will stop there and let Dr. Boyd go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we shared, you know, during our initial presentation, it is our desire to prohibit seclusion over time at all of our schools. And the reason we say over time is that we want to make sure that as we remove this emergency intervention, that we also provide additional supports and training for staff so that staff and students can be safe. And so as we look at, as I shared during the presentation, we're going to be providing some really intensive coaching, supports, and PD at our other schools, specifically our comprehensive services sites who have some students who have additional needs and have had students being impacted by seclusion, as well as some of our comprehensive schools without seclusion sites. So we're going to be providing very, very intense support to them through our ABA coaches and our behavior intervention teams. And the, the level of support that's required for Burke, we want to make sure that, again, the students there have more intention needs, and we want to make sure that we are providing additional training and giving and honoring the time of training that is needed for those staff to be safe and for those students to be safe without immediately prohibiting it there. Key and Kilmar is a little bit, is a little bit different, and then I'll be brief. And that we also want to make sure we're supporting the behavioral needs of our students, but also many of those students there are medically fragile, have traits and other things. And so we want to make sure that we're not unintentionally creating circumstances where in emergency situations, staff feel like they have to have more hands-on. We don't want that to be an unintended consequence. We don't want unintended consequences around more restrictive placements. And so we want to make sure that prior to removing that intervention, again, that's only to be used in emergency situations of those five situations that we outlined, that we provide really some more intensive supports and training for students and, excuse me, for staff so that students and staff can be safe.
I mean, to be fair, though, those five things include somebody's quote-unquote reasonable judgment, which is pretty broad, right? Like, that's the kind of thing you put in there if you want to give an explanation as to why something was used. How, how would you define reasonable judgment?
So on reasonable judgment, as our administrators are reviewing the circumstance with staff, we do have them document what interventions were tried prior to that, what the context around. As we talk about serious bodily injury, there's a very significant threshold. We talk about risk of death, limb protracting. It's not, you know, Michelle got pushed or Michelle, you know, it's very insignificant. So it's older, some of it.
We don't require, but the policy also doesn't require other techniques to be used in advance so long as there's reasonable judgment that they wouldn't have worked.
Correct. But those are, and again, those are the rare instances, and that's what's outlined. So for example, a rare instance might be, if we were saying, because that applies to restraint and seclusion, if a student, and again, I will use an extreme situation, if a student is running into the in front of cars, some of our schools are positioned right on highways. It's not reasonable for me to try and do some of the verbal de-escalation as an adult. I need you to go out there, grant Michelle, and sometime Michelle's still trying to get back out there. I need you to hold and secure Michelle so that she's safe because we can't risk that first try not being affected. So that's an extreme situation, but that's why there's that latitude in the state and why we've incorporated that latitude in our draft policy, but again, really relying heavily upon our administrators to be brief with staff and for us to provide coaching for our administrators on what would be reasonable.
Well, I think it's that latitude that's probably just as frightening to parents of these students as those circumstances that kind of get talked about, right? Because the latitude increases the possibility of the overuse. I'll take a go back. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I have you down on the go-back list. Dr. Anderson, are you able to connect now?
I think so. I.
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was able to hear myself, but clearly I was the only one. I do want to say thank you to Dr. Boyd and the team for, for the work on this, and particularly for being so responsive to some of the feedback that has been, that have been provided. I'm glad to see some of the changes that you've talked about even today. I, I want to speak a little bit more to kind of the aftermath of events, so to speak. Just full disclosure, you know, I work, I was the, an administrator of many schools, many schools with a lot of significant programs. And so I'm not unaware of the consequences of both restraining and seclusion. I've had more than my fair share of activity in this realm where students were, were not safe and interventions had to be applied. And one of the things that I know for a fact is the intensity of, of that moment. It impacts students, of course. It impacts families. It impacts staff. And I know this has been a failure that I've always had, you know, there hasn't been sufficient time to, to, to address the trauma for staff. If you could speak to that a little bit, what is the general plan of addressing the trauma for, after the, the event for staff, for the families, and for students? I see some pieces here that I also have some questions about. But if you could focus on the families and staff component first, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. In terms of our, our staff, you know, we do, staff do have access to our employee assistance program. A number of our administrators, you know, even as they talk, even prior to our, our formulating this in policy for the staff degree, staff members, administrators, council, if you will, informally, staff on a number of topics. So whether it's about, you know, things they've experienced here, whether it's about in other situations, their impact of COVID. So I think a lot of our administrators serve as quasi-counselors for staff. And again, you know, they're not in that therapeutic role, so I guess I use that loosely. But we do have the formal process for our employee assistance program because we know people have different experiences. And so what you experience at work may connect to some other things and impact our adults in a different way. As we talk about trauma-informed care and adverse childhood experiences, even as adults, we know that impacts us. So as we look at, at a division wide, as we talk about student conduct, as we talk about, which is a separate topic than this, but it all connects when, when staff being trauma-informed, being able to manage their own self-care needs and acknowledging our own ACEs, if you will, that we have. So those are some of the things. But again, informally, our administrators do a lot of it. But we certainly have folks who staff can access that are professionally trained through our EAP program. Our families, that is something that we probably need to work on to see how we can support families. Again, it may, may be connecting with some of our community partners. We sit on CPMT that connects with a number of community agencies that we can see. How can we connect and support? Because again, we're not specifically mental health providers. But how do we create a bridge and maybe provide some resources that if families need them, that they would be able to access? Certainly keeping equity in mind. So what are some resources that may be access free of charge? What are some other opportunities? So that is something that we need to work on, and we need to make sure that is readily available to our families.
Thank you for that. I, I would definitely like some consideration to formalize whatever supports can be available for both families and for staff. So I will probably add this to my next step as well. And again, as I shared earlier, this kind of behavior is, is something that I have seen before. And so the question that I have here is this. You talked about how certain behaviors and certain interventions would be available at the CSS sites, CSS sites. What is the expected staff response if some of those behaviors were to happen at the other schools?
So I think, and to make sure I'm understanding your question, what happens? Because the CSS sites is affected, per the draft policy effective January 1, would not be able to implement seclusion, nor would our other comprehensive schools. And so our expectation is that we may be able to use, you know, again, focus on those verbal de-escalation methods. But before that, as we talk about providing support with our schools, really looking at our data proactively to say, poor students who have had multiple instances of seclusion or restraint, and thus proactively as a team with additional supports of ABA coaches and bits, pulling their information out even before some of our students returned to school. We know that, you know, not, most of our students are virtual at this point, but being prepared prior to the students coming back in the door. So looking at those functional behavior assessments of students having, have them. For students who don't have them, but we see where those things have happened, how we proactively reach out to families. And so I know our policy talks about, in writing, talks about, and we can adjust the language as well, if restraints or seclusion occur two times in a school year, that no later than 10 days, you can, you convene these teams. But that's, that's the requirement. It's not the expectation that folks would have to wait until that long. And so maybe there's opportunity for us to revise our language around those things because we do want to be proactive. We, you know, we, just as we do with instruction, we look at our previous data to inform what we need to do differently for students, for, for teachers. So it's that same logic that we would want to apply here.
I, I think that's a consideration that I would also like for you to, to add. And I'm, again, glad to have, to add this to a next step because I think it's important that we are being as proactive as possible, particularly when we have students with histories that we can, we can get ahead of. One of the other pieces that I want to say that I was very glad to hear is the parent communication piece. It is really paramount that parents be informed that day. It, it has to happen on that day. So I am very glad to hear that there are efforts that are being placed to that. The other question that I have here is, oh my goodness, I lost my question. I lost my question. Can I hold on to the rest of my time and come back, Ms. Seismar Heiser?
Of course, of course. We can add that to your go-back.
Thank you.
Ms. Mulberg, do you have the rest of Dr. Anderson's time listed to add to her go-back?
Yes, we, we. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next, we have Ms. Cohen.
Thank you again. And I appreciate the comments of my colleagues for sure ahead of me. To that end, I would like to pick up where Dr. Anderson left off with notification. It's, it's gotta be 24 hours. I think, you know, I, I have, I have grave concerns that we treat a medical emergency like fever or vomiting in a different way than we do this kind of situation that requires any kind of restraint or any kind of seclusion. You know, I think that we have an opportunity with our emergency contacts to even contact them and, and not reveal any information, but be able to say, we need your help in getting this parent immediately. There's a situation at the school. You know, I, we need to be doing that. We need to be figuring out, is there a way in our emergency care cards that there's a box that can be checked about information that can be revealed to trusted adults who could come and intervene in these situations before we wind up in a situation that nobody. um, before we wind up in a situation that nobody wants to be in. And, you know, I will say in my years in teaching, I will echo what Dr. Anderson said um, of being bit and kicked, um, having to clear a room. I, I know how hard it is to be the staff member in that room. I can't imagine how hard it is to be the administrator trying to figure out and navigate what we do. Um, but we absolutely have to let parents know that day. And reports have to be written that day, because if we've learned anything about trauma-informed practices, if you're writing up these incidents the next day, it, it, the way that trauma impacts your reflection on a situation does not mean that you're getting the full picture of what's happening. Um, and I want to make sure that those reports are incredibly specific and detailed to what happened, um, because we know that if we're going to make any progress here, we got to figure out triggers um, and how to stop situations before they turn into this. Um, so that's of of grave concern to me. Um, and again, you know, I so appreciate you referencing trauma-informed practices and how people will be trained. But I do worry, just to echo a bit of what Dr. Anderson said, not in reference to CSS sites, but when you go back and look at the data of where seclusion was used. You know, our folks at Key and Kilmer and Burke who are beyond amazing, um, that's not where we're seeing this used. We're seeing this used even at places that don't even have some of the specialized programs that we've been referencing today. And so, you know, my, in the world of unintended consequences and how do we get in, I hundred percent support banning all seclusion. What are we doing to make sure that those teachers are ready on one, like very specifically? Um, I think that we as a community need to, need to know that, so teachers are ready. And I definitely need to go back. I apologize, Ms. Seismohizer.
No worries. Um, thank you, Ms. Cohen. Does anyone have responses to Ms. Cohen before I go on?
I I think um, my my takeaway is if I heard Ms. Cohen correctly, she echoed, you know, um, passionate sentiments of, you know, that were, that were shared previously with same-day notification, written notification, wanting to ensure teachers have the skills and resources and not just our teachers. And again, our our tiered supports and PD and onsite coaching with our bits and our intensive support team and our ABA coaches. Those folks will be not only supporting the CSS sites, but like we shared earlier, some of those other sites um, where, where those supports will be needed based on our our data. Um, and so we're going to make sure, again, it's beyond coaching, because, I mean, excuse me, beyond professional development. We've all of ed- educators have sat in a room, seen the slideshow, you know, you do your quiz and you go out. But it's when I have Michelle, you know, wiggling in my classroom, how do I respond to these things? So the professional development, I I've used that lightly, but it's not, it it is important. But that ongoing feedback, coaching and technical assistance is really what will enable us to um, really build capacity. And one of the things that we talked about even as an internal team is that, again, while we're working with our internal resources, we know we're shifting priorities. So, um, you know, while we may have said previously that all schools get X number of days of bits or ABAs, you know, we're now looking at our data to say, where where does the data indicate that the need is? And so it's not that we're forgetting about the other schools, they just may have, based on their levels, um, a different amount of support, because we all know equity is not equal. So that's the kind of concept that we're trying to uh, support and move in that direction.
Yeah, if I could just add to Dr. Boyd's comment, the pr- prior board, when we did budgeting for bits, I think we got Dr. Boyd and your staff could verify to a bit for every pyramid. Or we became very, very close. And what Dr. Boyd is saying now is to really take the equity lens and say, we're going to be strategic about the data, Ms. Cohen, like you said. Where is it happening? And that's where we're going to have to distribute the bits and do the training and the follow-up and the monitoring, where the intensity is, where it it needs, needs to be student-driven for the distribution of these bits in the schools as we, as we implement this policy, not just one for every pyramid. And so that's going to be the refocus. I see Dr. Boyd nodding her head. And that is going to be a change. That's something we're going to have to move from the, the equality focus to an equity focus. Go where the need is, go where we're seeing a higher number of these cases and do more hands-on training with those teachers.
Thank you very much. Um, if it's okay with Ms. Ome, she was next, I'm going to let Dr. Anderson, who found her question, finish her time. So if Ms. Mena is ready to finish her time, that would be, if you could finish Dr. Anderson's time, Ms. Mena, I would really appreciate it. And thank you, Ms. Ome, for your flexibility.
I appreciate it too. Thank you, Ms. Ome. There's just so many place of pages of notes I try to check off when the questions are being asked. And sometimes I I don't find what I'm looking for quickly enough. Um, it's, uh, one of the recommendations that I noticed from the ACSD, and this is, I think they sent their slides. Um, I think this is on five, where they talked about after a period of restraint or second application that like to have, oh, was, was that my time?
You can finish your sentence, Dr. Anderson. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, there had a little bit more in that. I apologize. But they talked about having the parents have an opportunity to to take the child home. Can you speak to the feasibility of this? Um, and I only ask this because I I know my training as a principal was that that was not an option, because it's considered to be a suspension. Can you speak to that, please?
Right. Um, so, you know, we we discussed that, you know, it was even as a placeholder on our notes, and you said we have notes everywhere. Um, because I think that, I I think in in my discussion or my listening to the stakeholders have presented that I think they um, wanted to be able to have the opportunity to intervene, because they don't want their, if their student continues to be uh, and and have imminent threat of serious physical harm to himself or others, then that student may be secluded, you know, for longer periods of time or or physically restrained. And I think they wanted to have that opportunity to inter, oftentimes parents, we can kind of, because we know our kids and we can kind of re-regulate them and things like that, perhaps a little bit more quickly. So I think that was the intent. Um, but again, as you said, we don't want to send a mixed signal, because we want to work with the students. We, you know, so perhaps it's conversation around, um, you know, maybe being able to engage verbally with students, but again, as we all know as practitioners, sometimes when students are escalated, handing a phone to them isn't the best thing to do. Um, but we don't want to send an unintended message that we want to send kids home or that we're given the responsibility of parents, it's our job as educators to work and support students, to identify those those gaps. Um, and to keep them safe too. So that, again, the fine balance. So perhaps through some additional conversation and dialogue, we can see what, what we might be able to implement or incorporate that would meet, address both needs. So that's been our discussion previously, but just.
I would like some more information about that, so I'll put that as my next step, and I'd like a go back, please. Thank you.
Sure. No problem, Dr. Anderson. Uh, Ms. Ome, thank you for your patience. It is your turn next.
Great. Thank you. Uh, happy to do that. So, um, and happy to follow, honestly, a number of these comments. Um, you know, firstly, thank you, Dr. Boyd and and staff for putting this together. Um, on the accountability on same-day notice that's been mentioned, so just to clarify, can we expect to see that modification in the language of what we're going to be faced with to vote on in the future?
Ms. Ome, we're continuing to to discuss and and partner with all stakeholders. So we're trying to make sure we identify, um, because we hear very strongly from the, from the majority of board members that the desire is to have that same-day notification. And so we want to make sure that we also partner with our administrators to make sure that, um, again, that that's done, because it should be a rare incidence, but to also get their feedback and their voice um, as well. So we're continuing to do that, but again, we'll be able, be able to update you prior to it coming back officially um, to you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and look forward to it. Honestly, um, would love to definitely see this reflected. And we'll see if we can gather the consensus from my colleagues to uh, put that forward, if if that's not um, consistent with what our administration thinks. Um, so I I also, so I find myself wanting to ask you questions about the incidents, how many incidents occur, what the disparities are, what the data is on the frequency. But I'm reminded uh, of 2019 and the fact that we have discrepancies in in our, in our own data collection and understanding. So I'm curious as to what we're relying on as a division to understand the realities of how this plays out on the ground and how it's being implemented. Because a lot of our comfort in this policy uh, is an expectation that we are meeting, you know, the implementation side. But um, I I'm curious as to what gives us that confidence and what data we rely on.
Thank you, Ms. Ome. So we continue to look at our data that is, that we collect um, essentially through DSS regarding use of restraint and seclusion. And we're actually in the process of scheduling our first um, our quarter one review with that multi um, departmental uh, team that I referred to earlier. Um, even though we've only had a small number of schools, we still believe it's important for us to look at our data. And so we certainly do have historical data that we've looked at, um, but are continuing even now to begin those and scheduling those quarter one discussions with our folks from DSS, student support from the MTSS app and and our equity office. Um, and the other pieces that I don't think I mentioned earlier was also the incorporation of our RAS, who provide leadership and support for our schools. Um, so again, this all hands-on deck approach to make sure that staff are supported and students are safe and staff are safe.
Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate that. I just, I mean, mindful of just 2019, right? I mean, this stuff came out that we had zero reported cases, when we know that's far from the truth. And now we have, you know, several thousand, but uh, just making sure that it's accurate, Dr. Boyd. I mean, I I don't know, I worry about relying on that information when we have good reason to believe it's not, you know, reliable.
We will certainly continue our professional development and our, and our training with administrators. And again, with our looking at the information on an ongoing basis, um, from multiple lenses as a central office support team. Um, I think that we're going to be able to provide support and also our our staff being in buildings often, our bits and our ABA coaches. Um, so I think we're going to be able to look at that data and really be able to provide some feedback and support. Um, and again, it's ongoing development of staff at the administrative level, at the teacher level, at the support staff level, so that we all have clear ideas of what seclusion is, what physical restraint is, what it's not. And then we're able to look at our data and identify the appropriate support to moving forward.
Yeah, I would just suggest, as we look at this policy, before we look at it again as a board, um, especially in the areas of subjectivity, right? Some of my colleagues pointed out some of it, other areas, you know, if staff deemed it a danger, an effort will be made. I think knowing that the data is far from reflective of the reality, we should kind of imagine the worst-case scenario and put in place the checks that are going to hold us accountable to making sure we're not, you know, wronging kids in the process or that there's not um, uh, you know, implementation that's not consistent with what we would be proud of, right? Um, so I I think Dr. Brabon wants to comment at some point. I'll come back to you, Dr. Brabon. Uh, I see he's on the phone. But um, so so tha- that's just something I think is extremely important and and just evaluating the entire thing. Worst-case scenario, are we doing right by kids in this situation and staff, of course? Um, can you also, so in seeing that uh, we're going to be banning seclusion from a number of uh, uh, schools, and I'm happy to see that. Um, can you speak to the steps we're taking to make sure our staff are safe and that we're implementing that effectively for those schools, all but three?
Sure. So again, it's the professional development and coaching that we're going to be implementing at our current comprehensive schools and our CSS sites this year. And then our piloting, the U-Peds at Burke. So again, it's while we're trying to phase, phase it out there, providing some additional resources. Um, our staff had an opportunity to go and look at that um, at another school division on last year, and various school divisions are using that. And again, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but just an additional option for s- for staff to keep their, themselves uh, safe, but also to minimize the need to have any hands-on interventions with students. Um, and as we look at, again, the additional professional development and our building out a multi-year plan uh, with various stakeholders, that's going to be the key piece as to how we phase out seclusion um, across the division. Again, we're prohibiting it now, um, again, or requesting it to be prohibited in 99% of our schools now. But we realize that, you know, it's a hundred percent is our desire, a hundred percent is our goal. So we just want to make sure that as we do that, we also support staff and and adding to their toolbox to keep them safe and to keep kids safe.
Dr. Brabon, did you want to step in?
I just wanted to make one comment, and I know Mr. uh, Bloom and Dr. Strong are here. We did fail as a school system to properly report data to the national um, civil rights database uh, over a period of multiple years. I think the report was every three years. Um, this administration never sent zeros into the national report, but it happened over a span of time. So I do want to acknowledge it. It was wrong, and we clearly came out and shared, and the prior board agreed. There's no excuses for it. That was the reporting of the data. The the other issue that you've raised, I just want to be clear about that. The other issue, Ms. Ome, is the collection of data from our schools. And doubling down on being sure that we are, when we're having these cases, that they're properly reported and that Dr. Boyd's team is aware of it and that they're following up with the school and the region assistant superintendent to be sure the necessary actions are being taken. So I think there's the accountability of the uh, the reporting of data to other groups and agencies, uh, which we are now moving forward and doing correctly. And there's the integrity of the data collection at each school and then following up. Uh, and I know Dr. Boyd and and her team are going to work closely with schools and RAS to be sure that when that data's coming in, uh, that they're following up. Or if there's, you know, one school uh, n- n- never seems to have any cases to just check in and go, hey, how is so-and-so doing? You know, to make sure that the, you know, uh, that no news is really good news. We've got to be sure that people feel confident, not just in this new policy, but that we're implementing the data collection with fidelity and the data reporting with fidelity as well. And I think that's part of what you were speaking to. And we have to acknowledge that for too many years, we reported no information, as did other school districts. And it's not, it was, it was wrong.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your distinction of of, you know, the past and the future. And I think we have, you know, the the, it's brighter in the future of what we can do. Um, and to your point, I mean, I think, you know, there are issues where we can know that we're relying on data, and there are ones where we know it's not there, right? So we have to think differently about those. I I'll take a go back.
Thank you. I was about to ask if you wanted to go back. Thank you. Um, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. Very happy to follow my colleagues uh, on all of their excellent questions. Um, I want to go to the first one about same-day notification. Um, this, this is very personal um, issue for me, because um, my father passed away from Alzheimer's, and in his final year, we found out after he passed away that the hospital wasn't reporting to us that he was put into four-point restraints. Um, that is against hospital policy. And um, I know how my family felt. Learning about that is traumatizing to any human being. So I, I do very much appreciate Dr. Brabon, your deep commitment to this continuous improvement. I I see it in your, in your heart and I know in your word. Um, and I appreciate, Dr. Boyd, that we all want to collaborate with our building administrators. Um, but I can't find i- in any way it's tenable to say that this school system is capable of notifying parents when there's a discipline issue, when there's a health issue, but we're not going to notify when their child has been um, restrained um, or secluded. So I I just, I feel strongly, colleagues, this is our school board policy. It is not um, the superintendent's regulation. Um, I believe in this partnership and I believe Dr. Brabon is with us fully. And if we have to explain that to our building ministers, why this is so important, I welcome that. I want to be on the same team. But I want to lead with the fact that there is no excuse. Um, and Lord Jane, you said it so well. Um, when something like this happens, it's serious. It needs to be documented. And um, you know, emergencies happen and our school employees are incredibly professional. They work long hours too many times. But in something like this, whether it's bucking up against after-hours, it's got to be done. So that's my, my one advocacy. Number two, I do hope that this board, um, when we have the conversation about a public hearing, I think it's important um, for our public to to really feel like they have a voice here. As rushed as this is, as well as Mr. Fish walked us through what happened at the state level and the the rush timeline to where we are, uh, I think a public hearing is important and warranted. Even if all 12 of us can't be there on the same um, evening for it, we'll be able to hear their testimony. Um, I also would ask that we consider having any revisions to the superintendent's regulation on this issue be brought back to ACSD and the school board for a crosswalk, just so we can appreciate and help the public see um, the alignment between this policy revision and any regulation um, uh, changes. I I think professional development is absolutely critical to Dr. Brabon's point. Um, it, we are, our policy is one thing, the execution is through the training. And I do appreciate your commitment to that, Dr. Brabon. And now my time is up.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Um, I didn't really hear a question in there, I apologize. But uh, Dr. Brabon, if you want to respond to some of Ms. McLaughlin's points, I'd be happy to give you that chance.
No, she's spot on. Thank you very much. And as Dr. Boyd said, we've heard clear today from multiple board members about the 24 hours, that it's too soon. that it's too significant to wait two days. So I, I know Dr. Boyd heard that. I heard it and we'll, we'll be taking that back and, uh, bringing forth, uh, you know, our feedback from it. But I hear you loud and clear and appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Just to clarify what I said is same day and that would be different than 24 hours. So I think, yeah, so we, we may have to talk about that a little more. Um, and I would like a go back.
No problem, Ms. McLaughlin. Put you on the list. Um, Ms. Tolan, I have you up next.
Great, thanks. Um, as long as we're on the topic, I'll throw my, uh, voice in as, um, one to, um, up the speed for notification of families, um, to have that happen immediately and tracked, you know, as if it's a health emergency. Um, I also wanted to ask, um, and Dr. Boyd, you talked a little bit about this and, and I, I would be remiss in, in not saying thank you too for, um, the amount of work that has gone in here. And a huge thank you also to our stakeholder communities, uh, SEPTA and ACSD for commenting and, um, providing materials to, um, all of us to take a look at, um, before today. Um, but I wanted to ask, I think you mentioned this a little bit in the presentation. Um, for the three schools where we're not, um, currently looking at banning seclusion, um, uh, what kind of like timeline or dates do you have to, you know, ultimately get to the point where we would be able to, um, not have seclusion in those schools as well?
So we are in the process of developing that multi-year plan and we need to incorporate some additional stakeholder voice. But we do know that this year, you know, we've banned it. And also this year, we're incorporating the pilot for Burke. Um, so hopefully we will be, we will be able to prohibit it for Burke on next year because they're doing their pilot this year. Um, so long as we're able to get, get all of that off and running and we have kids in schools to be able to utilize those resources, um, and get our data back. Um, and for Key and Camera, we haven't, we have not identified a formal timeline, um, that would certainly have that incorporated, um, for board consideration and, and a multi-year plan there. But again, our desire is to do it as soon as possible. Just making sure that we've also equipped our staff with the appropriate resources, um, prior to making that shift.
Okay, great. I may put that in as the next step to have that, um, plan available. Um, and this is a question I had, uh, raised, um, by a stakeholder. I thought it was interesting. Um, would it be possible for these locations where we are still using, um, seclusion to have, um, cameras um, in those classrooms or in those areas so that, um, we could even use it for even training purposes, you know, to review incidents leading up to or during or after seclusion? Um, and, uh, you know, have something like that be available to parents? Is that possible?
I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Foster as it may have, you know, various legal implications. And I just want to make sure that expert addresses that.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Boyd. Um, Ms. Tolan, we would have to look very closely at that. There are, uh, FERPA and other federal law restrictions on, um, reporting students um, in an educational environment. And, um, and so we'll look in, into that question that you raised and, um, report back out to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I also, I will be putting in it as a next step. Um, you know, as we move forward, we talked a little bit about this, Ms. McLaughlin brought it up. As we, um, move forward with this policy and then take a look at our regulations and changes that need to be made to regulations, I would like to have, um, an outreach plan to our, um, stakeholders, um, you know, and how they'll be involved in, um, putting together, you know, that information. And I also wanted to just support, um, really looking at treating, um, the use of seclusion and restraints, as we talked earlier, as a, um, a trauma inducing event. And as we mentioned earlier, I'm providing counseling to students, parents and staff. But also wanted to mention this idea of, um, you know, having something in the policy as to making sure that, uh, having a trusted adult versus just the principal listed as someone that can work with the students um, or, or the family for that matter. Um, you know, sometimes our principals, I think, are viewed as, um, you know, the disciplinarians and there may be another adult in the building that, um, is more appropriate for that situation. So I don't know if anyone has a comment on that. Um, but those are the things that I wanted to mention.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And we, um, we certainly, because we heard feedback from, uh, from the various stakeholders that wanted there to be that opportunity to debrief and discuss, uh, with this trusted personnel of that student's choosing. So we're incorporating that. The, the piece regarding the student debrief, um, is something that's required for the principal or principals designate, um, to occur. So that's part of the state regulation that, that's a requirement. But again, um, we're adding a component regarding the student's, um, ability to conference with, with a trusted person. And that may be the administrator, that might be a football culture, you know, it might be a variety of folks. Um, but we do want students to have the opportunities to select who that trusted person is above and beyond distinct regulation requirements for the principal or the designate to debrief with the student.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Tolan, was that, you can interview two questions then? Ms. Tolan?
All right, you have my microphone. I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. No problem. You saw time left. Um, next then we have Ms. Marin.
Yes, thank you. Uh, let me just pull up my thoughts here. Yeah, so I have three comments and two questions. So, um, having worked on the governance committee earlier this year, this reminds me a lot of the work we did on the child abuse reporting policy. And what was great about where we landed with that policy, which is 2115, we, we approved in September, is we made it really clear what the procedures were when something was suspected. We worked really hard on that and I think that that kind of approach is really needed here because it was very confusing for me. We need that exact road, road plan. So I encourage you, um, I ask that that be made. Um, the second thing is that, you know, sections nine and 10 talk about prevention and training, but they're at the end of the policy. And so I think that contextualizing the, the use of restraint and seclusion as something that is to be done only with extreme scarcity, um, is really a, a better way to, to, to set this, um, into context. You know, I think it needs to have that tone of what is done to mitigate its use and, and less about discipline and more about using it with scarcity, you know, if it comes to that. Um, I also think that it is critical to make this not just a special education policy, um, but one that is applicable to any student. And I, I share that because, you know, I've heard firsthand from principals that, you know, we have children who may not have an IP or 504, but yet they could be in the process of obtaining those services or perhaps their parents aren't, you know, ready to start that process. But we have instances where especially little ones, they come in with trauma and they might be throwing desks and the teacher's trying to clear a classroom and they do need, um, an option. So I, I do encourage again, as, you know, last resort, um, you know, what this policy, you know, can lay out. My, my two questions are, Dr. Boyd, I, I'm so eager for you to join our system and I'd love to know more about your philosophy for restraint and seclusion and, you know, how your experience, um, is seen reflected in this policy and what you might think is to come in, in what to do in our division. And then also I did want to clarify for sure what the reporting requirements are. Um, you know, uh, do, is there an annual report every three years? I know we have the dashboard, but, you know, what about the data, um, from last year? And, you know, can we put on the calendar every year, um, if not quarterly or half yearly? The board hearing and update, um, and I know the policy has some of those things, but we could codify that in the policy saying the board will hear this update every so often in addition to school-based staff understanding, you know, and, and understanding what the data is. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, Ms. Marin, we can certainly incorporate language into the policy that specifies when the board will get, um, that feedback and report. Um, and our annual, our reporting that's outlined in the policy speaks to state ring. I think the, the civil rights data that, um, Dr. Brabran referenced earlier, earlier was at federal level. So that's not referenced there, but we could include that language, um, just for more clarity around our reporting practices. Um, and lastly, I think that, you know, in talking with staff and talking with, um, the administrators, the central office staff and in our families, um, I think we all share the same vision. My personal vision, um, you know, as I shared even during my interview, is I think that most situations can be, um, resolved when students are escalated without the use of physical restraint and seclusion. Um, and I think as I talk to, as we've talked with different stakeholders, we have common views. As we talk with our central office teams, that's their desire. The administrators, that's their desire. The families, that's their desire. Um, and I think that part of this process will just be making sure that we solidify how we go about making that happen. Um, how we make sure we provide resources and supports for staff to ensure that they're safe. Um, and how we make sure that we're communicating what we're doing in a way that builds trust with our families and our community. Um, so those are some of the things. So I, I share with you the Michelle perspective. Um, but as in talking with colleagues, it's a shared vision, it's a shared goal. And, and we know that it's going to take multiple persons, um, to make sure that we, again, of all of our practices. And I do, I, I also want to lastly comment on one of your opening remarks as well. You are absolutely correct in that, um, this is not intended to be solely a special education policy. I think, you know, in our identifying the department, that spear, that our, um, director of special education procedural support, Dr. Strong spearheaded the development of the policy. And so, um, we've kind of listed the department and I certainly see how that creates, um, a misconception and create kind of a beauty about. So this is certainly a policy for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much.
Ms. Marin, are you finished with your time? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I appreciate that. Um, next we have Ms. Bukarski and then I will take my turn before we, um, pause and talk about our public hearing and then go to go back. So Ms. Bukarski, you may go ahead.
Great. Thank you, um, Ms. Hasmore Heiser. And I'm really happy to follow Ms. Marin, um, who referenced, uh, another policy that was worked on in governance. I think, uh, you know, some of the suggestions that she brought up about making it just a very crystal clear policy as to, um, you know, if this happens, then this, if this happens, then that. Just very clear, very easy to follow along is imperative in this, um, particular type of policy. So I, I, I would love to see, um, some clarity. And I think it was maybe Ms. Corbett Sanders who also talked about, um, you know, clear introduction about what our, um, goals are. Uh, and, you know, I agree with that, just macro level. I would like to see, um, that kind of fleshed out a little bit. My other big, um, point of advocacy has been brought up, but i- it is just so important, um, that I have to also, um, you know, lend my support is that it is imperative that our, um, parents are notified when any of these incidents have occurred. Um, there just is no way around that and they need to be, uh, notified immediately for the reasons that my colleagues have brought up. Um, so I do, uh, hope that that will be something that, um, will be, uh, more, you know, that will be worked on a little bit, uh, more before we vote on this policy. Um, the annual reporting, I think, uh, is imperative that this board, um, sees that um, and gets, you know, reports and copies of that, um, during the year. I, I think somebody else might have brought this, um, up as well. And I do have one question. There was, um, in the policy, there is, uh, some reference to time, um, you know, I, I guess, seclusion time being linked to age. Can somebody talk a little bit about this? Uh, where did that come from? And, um, it, just what is the thinking behind that piece of this, please?
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Um, and I apologize, my camera's having some delay starting, but I'll go ahead and, and talk, um, for time. Um, the, there is some reference in the policy regarding, um, seclusion or restraint not exceeding the number of years of the age of the individual. But prior to that, and which is probably the more important piece, um, and perhaps we just need to make it more pronounced in that same section is that physical restraint and seclusion is to be eliminated as soon as that, um, um, imminent risk or, and threat of serious physical harm is, is eliminated. And so as soon as that happens, it could be one second, it can be in two seconds. As soon as that happened, that physical restraint must stop, not should stop, not consider stopping, but must stop as well as seclusion must be stopped as soon as that imminent threat, um, occurs. Um, the, the piece speaking to the, the years, um, you know, minutes per years of age, um, that was if that imminent threat was ongoing. Um, and then the caps it, you know, you at least have to break it after so many minutes and then if you have to reapply it, if that, again, imminent risk of serious physical harm exists. So perhaps we just need, because those two things are in separate sections and some other stakeholders brought that to light. Again, that might, that's an opportunity for us to, um, look at our verbiage and really reinforce it even when that ages is referenced and right there in that same section. So, um, I, I think that's definitely, um, opportunity for us to, to improve that right now.
Absolutely. And that goes back to, you know, the prior comment about being very clear, but also, you know, what happens at that point, if we've met, um, you know, we've met that maximum and, and the student is still presenting a danger. I think we've got to be crystal, crystal clear for parents and, and for, um, staff as to what the expectations are. Um, and I am just, uh, very pleased to hear that as a division, um, Dr. Brabran, and you also share the goal of phasing out, um, these practices and focusing on, um, more, uh, you know, proactive, um, means. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. We appreciate it. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you. Um, if Dr. Boyd or Dr. Brabran, if you don't have any further comments to Ms. Bukarski, I will take my turn. So, um, if Ms. Mahidda can start my timer, I would appreciate it. Um, so I agree with, with many of my colleague's statements, especially about notifications. I'm not going to belabor those quite yet. So I'm going to start with, um, the overarching theme that I think is, could be used here a little more. The first is a theme I'm hearing of discretion for rare circumstances. Discretion about reasonableness because of the rare time a child runs into the street. Discretion around parent notification for the rare time someone has to get home. Um, in my experience as a special education parent for the last 15 years, um, it, good intentions aside, discretion for rare circumstances can end up at times being erased to the bottom. And I'll give you an example. Many years ago, there was a, um, there was an issue around parent visitation and observation of special education classrooms. And Polak and FCPS negotiated a minimum of 30 minutes a month. In many schools, that minimum has been interpreted to be a maximum. So I think it is really, really important that we be very specific and clear about what those rare circumstances are or the criteria around those rare circumstances and specific and clear that the intention is not to race to the bottom of those rare circumstances. So the, the theme I'm seeing of discretion is very troubling to me in this. And I can go through the specific instances, but the parent notification is one of the biggest ones. Um, I see the language that's written and this is on page six of the, um, of the policy, which talks about, I think what Dr. Boyd talked about, that emergency situation is really confusing. It is, um, section 6C and section 7C. It, it's very confusing that that discretion about not to use a chain of intervention is only in an emergency situation. I didn't even read it that way till she said that. So I think that really needs to be clarified. I do think that we need to put in specificity around outside of those emergency situations, what is the expectation of chain of intervention before restraint or seclusion is required? And I think that can be a section saying outside of those really emergent rare circumstances, this is a chain of intervention we expect to have happen in those emergency situations. Perhaps that cannot be followed, but that needs to be clear. So that's my first thought and that's page six. Um, on page eight to nine, when we talk about follow-up and the trusted adult, I want to, um, put something out there that when we are dealing with children who have been restrained or secluded and probably have a high level of PTSD or anxiety, putting on that child to name their trusted adult or maybe ask for the trusted adult and to wait until that trusted adult is available is, is, I'm going to put out the word terrible. And I make that, I say that word strongly because one, my own experience with a child on the autism spectrum who may not have behavioral issues but has meltdowns, someone getting that trust enough for him has been the key. Someone else needs to be responsible for that, not the child. And I'll put myself down for a go back. But if someone could, um, talk to my two things, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, R- uh, Ratsna or Ms. Hasmore Heiser, can you on page eight? Can you, I, I, I heard both things and great feedback for us about the chain of intervention to look at page six. But can you be a little more specific where you were talking on page eight? And I was trying to find it as you were making your comments.
Um, I mean, and, and I, I won't go too long, but page eight really talks about reviewing the incident. And I think it's important to review the incident.
With getting a trusted adult to the child as soon as possible and looking at it from a trauma-informed lens. But I'll talk more about that on my go back.
Okay.
I don't want to take advantage of my time. I'll, I'll make sure to address. I appreciate the question and if Dr. Boyd doesn't have anything, I'll, I'll pause here to talk about the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Sizmore Heizer. Thank you for the feedback.
All right, thank you. So we've all had one round of commentary at this point. I see Ms. Corbett Sanders has also a go back as well and I'll put you down. And I do not have a go back right now for Ms. Marin and Ms. Tolan. I just wanted to make sure you all did not want to go back. At this moment, I'd like to pause before going to the next round, just do a quick time check. It is 4:20. There has been some community discussion around wanting a public hearing and I had some board interest in wanting a public hearing as well. So right now I'd like to pause to have, be able to have that conversation about a public hearing. And so if board members would like a public hearing, if everybody wants, if you can put your hands down for go backs, I have the order written down. If anybody is interested in a public hearing, I think we need a motion and a second and then we can have a conversation about it. So. Would any of you like to make a motion about having a public hearing? I see four hands up, so I'm just going to go to the first one on my list, which is Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Bukarski, are you making a motion? For a public hearing on restraint and seclusion 17?
Yeah, sure. I can, I'm happy to do that.
And so there's a motion on the table for the school board to hold a public hearing around restraint and seclusion. Policy before we take a vote on December 17th. I see Ms. McLaughlin's hand is up after that. Are you seconding that motion, Ms. McLaughlin?
I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion made by Ms. Bukarski, a second by Ms. McLaughlin. If anyone would like to speak to this motion, I see three hands up right now, so I'm assuming you're speaking to that motion. If you're not, please go ahead and put your hands down. We'll start with Ms. Bukarski as the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to that motion?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Sizmore Heizer. Just very quickly, I mean, this is very straightforward. This is obviously. A very important policy to our stakeholders. We've gotten lots of feedback. I am. You know, always happy to hear from our community and they want to share their thoughts. So I hope my colleagues agree. And we are able to schedule that soon.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak briefly to your second?
I would. I do very much appreciate that the board has really benefited from our community. Reaching out to this board on such an important policy and advocating for the importance of us. Providing this public hearing where they can speak more fully. It is difficult in our normal citizen participation slots of 10 speakers to allow for this and given the. Degree of which this board takes very seriously, this policy and the short time period on the turnaround, I think the, the public hearing is the most expeditious way to make that happen. So. I appreciate that there's been strong board support as we hear from one another and I look forward to this happening.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, I'll be very brief. This board has had a long time commitment to transparency, accountability. And engaging our public in helping us form public policy. And so I believe that it is essential on this very important piece of policy. That we have a engagement with the public that allows for more thorough. Hearing of the public's views and this should be coupled with additional consultation with the ACSD. On the draft policy per the state guidance on engaging that important advisory body.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I see Ms. Omesh's hand is up also. Ms. Omesh, would you like to comment to this motion?
Yeah, I'm not going to repeat. I'd be remiss not to mention though a couple of things, you know. While of course this policy is not necessarily only for special ed students, it no doubt disproportionately impacts them. And I, and I think really I'd be remiss not to say, we have a situation where, you know, the ACSD has not had the opportunity to. Provide concrete feedback on this in, in looking at the full policy. I. I'm really concerned that we've had this amount of time to, to go to Mr. Frisch's policy pieces, or sorry, framing conversation earlier. And we find ourselves in this circumstance. I hope it's an additional lesson learned. And in the future, I think, given the fact that we don't have fully reliable data on the sensitive issue. It's important to have a representative even with us. We have ACSD for a reason. This is where the siloing can happens. We have an opportunity, I don't know how many of my colleagues had the chance to connect with their representatives, but I really would encourage you to talk with them. About what's gone on in the committee, what they've been privy to and not and all that. But again, just an example of a lesson learned. And finally. I, I'm going to support this because of the importance of it, but I think we have to also walk into it being mindful of. The many voices, the many people, the thousands of stakeholders who aren't even going to know that we have a hearing. So as we move forward, I think. More school-based outreach and really hearing from the community, taking the time over the year that we had. Is a worthwhile endeavor, but I, I, I hope my colleagues will consider supporting this for the many reasons that, you know, are, are obvious.
Thank you, Ms. Omesh. And then Mr. Frisch, are you speaking to this motion also?
I'd like to call the question.
All right, so Mr. Frisch is calling the question. Do I have a second on that? Ms. Cohen is seconding it. I believe we need two thirds of the board to call the question. So if I could. Ask our board members to please raise their hand if they're in agreement to calling this question. And so I have Mr. Frisch, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Marin, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Kiesgmar, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnat Kofax and myself. That is unanimous. So we call the question. So if board members could please lower their hands. And then we will take the vote. Ms. Kiesgmar, are you just ready to vote or you still have your hand up from before? Thank you. So all those in favor of holding a public hearing on the restraint and seclusion policy before we take the vote on December 17th, please raise your hand. All right, so we have Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Kiesgmar, Ms. Darnat Kofax, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Tolan, myself. Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Marin, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Bukarski. That is unanimous. So I will ask our board chair and vice chair to work with our clerk and staff to schedule that public hearing. So thank you very much. Having said that, please go ahead and lower your hands. I will turn over the next. Part of the meeting for our go backs to Ms. Tolan to take over from here. Just to do a time check, it's 4:26. We scheduled this meeting for three hours. So we have. About an hour left till 5:30 for this meeting. I will send the list of go backs to Ms. Tolan, but she will take over from here. Just a reminder for go backs. We are limiting our go backs to a minute and a half for board member. And one minute for staff comment. And again, if we could limit staff to one or two responses unless absolutely necessary, that will help keep our board member. Comments flowing as well as stick to our timeline. So having said that, our first person for go back is Ms. Kiesgmar and Ms. Cohen. I'll send you the rest of the list.
Ms. Ms. Sizmore Heizer, I have a point of order, please.
Yes, Ms. Marin, go ahead.
I, I, I would like to make a motion to decide what time this meeting is going to end. And what happens if by 5:30 it does not because the superintendent, chief academic officer. Chief operating officer, myself and some other staff have a budget meeting. It was very hard to schedule and I just want to know if it's going to be made.
Go ahead and make your motion. Then we can let you speak to it. That would be fine.
Sure, I would like a motion to decide now if we will end at, I'd like a motion. Gosh, to at this time decide if this meeting will end at 5:30. I guess, well, can you, let me just talk there for a second because what I want to figure out is.
Ms. Marin, if I may, I moved that, I moved that the meeting ended at 5:30. Is that what you want to put forward?
Well, it is, but I need to notify staff before then, you know, I can't tell them at 5:30 the meeting's canceled. So can we make a motion to end at? Five and if by five we haven't ended, take a vote to determine what happens next. So I moved to end the meeting at five and if it's five o'clock and we're still moving, can we please pause and decide the next step?
So the motion on the table for Ms. Marin is to end the meeting at five. And if the conversation is still going on, to take another vote at five o'clock. So do I have a second for this motion? Dr. Anderson's seconding this motion. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to this motion?
No, that defeats the purpose. Thanks.
Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your second?
I actually have a question. Your budget meeting is for what time? Is it for 5:30? I see. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, I appreciate with, with what Ms. Marin is asking. I think we were very clear at the very beginning. We wanted to give this the three hours that we. Committed as a board and to the public. I understand she has another meeting and I see no reason we can't be done with a minute and a half each. To go ahead and have our go backs and be done by then. What, we'll just plan to adjourn at 5:30. I don't know why we're chewing up time with a motion. We already agreed to be done at 5:30.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. So at this point, I'll call for the vote on the motion.
May I just make one final remark?
Sure.
Well, at this point, we've had two meetings today and both have gone over. So the data show that we don't keep to our meeting end times. So I would to please commit to five, regroup at five. If people want to continue, that's great. And that is the full three hours. Started late. Thank you.
I'll make a quick comment to this motion, then I'll call for the vote. My quick comment is that I think we'll waste more time taking the vote now and then stopping again at five to do that. So. Ms. Marin?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wasn't I, wasn't I allowed to have the last word on my motion?
Ms. Marin, you just spoke. So, you know, if we can keep using up more time, but I, I don't think we need to stop again at five. So that's my, that's my statement on that. So I'm. Having said that, Ms. Marin, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on this, so we don't take up more time on that. So all those in favor of stopping the meeting at five and then perhaps taking another vote, if we wish to continue, please raise your hands. All right, so I have Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Darnat Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Cohen. So that motion passes. So we will go until five o'clock. And then take another vote at that point whether we want to continue the conversation or not.
Thank you.
All right. So having said that, we will start with Ms. Kiesgmar for the go backs. Again, a minute and a half for board member. Plus again, since we're stopping at five, if I could really ask our staff to limit their comments as best as possible and board members only if needed, I'd appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question for you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, Mr. Frisch? Is it from you or from the Dr. Anderson? But go ahead.
Sorry. Is, is there a end goal here in terms of what we're hoping for? Staff to get out of this meeting in terms of our direction on the policy? I know we're not voting on anything. But we can clearly give them guidance. So when they come back with something that's closer aligned to our thinking. I wanted us to factor that in and see what your thinking is in terms of how we end this thing when it does end.
I think in my understanding and I welcome staff comment is that we give feedback to staff through the next steps. And then staff follows up with us through next steps to, and I know Dr. Boyd is looking at some revisions to the policy to come back. Before we have to vote. Ms. Kiesgmar, I think you still have your mic on. So that is my understanding that we're, staff is not looking for consensus from today, but Dr. Braybrand, if you want to add to that, that would be fine.
The only thing I'd say is, I know you have a tough job to balance additional board questions and comments. I'd love a little bit of time before five to look at the next steps, just so that. We're clear about what you want from us, so that we have that follow-up. I think that's what Mr. Frisch is getting at. And the next steps can help give us guidance. But we've heard clear several themes that I've got with Dr. Boyd. But you're making sure we've looked at them and that they're reflected in the next steps is fine.
All right, well, I will say we'll get, take board comments till five and at that moment we can make a vote to look at next steps or not, but that only gives us. 27 minutes for board comments for 12 board members. So, yeah, I will do my best, Dr. Braybrand. I see a bunch of hands up. I would like to start our board comments at this point, since the motion's passed to go till five. And then we can go from there. So I have the list of order. Ms. Kiesgmar, I have you next if you want to go ahead and then I'll send it to Ms. Tolan and have her take over the rest of the meeting.
I need to defer my comments at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Frisch, you are next then. I'm sorry, I just realized, I just realized, Ms. Darnat Kofax didn't have her first round. So if we don't mind, I'll give Ms. Darnat Kofax her first round and then we'll start with Mr. Frisch.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I, I don't want to be labor, but I do want the public to know I am for the same day notification. I am for also the extreme professional development because I think it's extremely important because as we said. This is not just a policy for our special education families, although they are impacted by it. It, it is also. For the general education families. I, I think there really has to be intense. Professional development so people can understand, administrator, staff can understand. That the fight or flight responses that sometime play into disruptive behavior, Dr. Braybrand and your team. I, I think that's extremely important because through my time on the board, I have seen. I, I have heard from advocates that, that, that is, that is the case. And I also think it's extremely important that. We have some, there, there are some places. When we talk about needing a quiet space for children, sometimes the best place is not in the room. And I have seen some. Particularly kids with sensory integration disorder, issues like that. I have seen some of our schools have done great. Great jobs with sensory hallways, sensory rooms. I don't know if that has been talked about, but I think alternatives need to be made and they need to be made across the board. And when there are some best practices out there in some of the schools. I would hope that these are options being considered for places to redirect. The fight or flight responses that our children are having because of whatever. Issues they're having at that moment in time. So have you talked about that? Using sensory rooms, sensory hallways, things like that. I have seen that in some of my schools. Has, has that been talked about at all as alternatives?
I'm going to let Dr. Boyd answer. I'd say the answer is yes, and we need to embed that in our professional development. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Ms. Darnat Kofax. We talked about it. The development of calm down spaces and while we, and again, like you're right, I'm unfamiliar with sensory rooms, sensory walks and hallways. Again, not just for students with disabilities, but for general education students too. And we are working as a team. That can certainly be an option as we work with our schools to look at the individual needs of students. As one of the tools in the toolkit that we provide additional resources for. And again, we know those things that vary from high tech to low tech. It could be, you know, rooms with dim lighting, the tangible pieces. You know, and I know there's discussions or there was previously discussion around swings and things like that and that. How that's utilized varies. We want to make sure kids have support spaces in classrooms so that they can reengage. But we know in order to get some of our students there. Some of our students sometimes do have to be removed from the room, but our, our ultimate goal is for students to be able to re-regulate in the classroom. So. Out in there, but yes, is the answer to your question. And brief.
Okay, well, I do appreciate that as I, and I can share with you offline some of the schools since you're just coming. I, I mean, I, I can share with you some of the schools that I have seen. That have done this very, very well and through, through the years and connect you with some of the principals who are, who are doing this work. I know you're bringing your own team and own eye on this. But I, I think it's just heartwarming to see when some of these strategies are used so effectively. And they don't result in the trauma. And I think that's the end of what we're trying to do. We're trying to avoid trauma. And redirect whatever anxieties that are out there and with these children and find ways to best do it. So. Thank you. And we, we just hadn't talked about that at all as, as alternative. I wanted to bring that up and I will add the next step to look into. Thank you.
Okay, then for next step, we have Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. So I'll just, I'll say that it's hard not to view this as a special education policy when. The, the folks being treated differently in the policy are in special settings. And while I know that we're not doing calls for consensus on various things that we'd like changed in the policy and that we're going to try and hammer that out. In, in our next steps, I'd like to do a little bit of that here in the public. I'm curious, if I put a next step that asks for staff to prepare a version of the policy that removes seclusion. So that the board can consider that as part of the next stage of this policymaking process, is that something that is doable?
I'm sorry, Mr. Frisch, was that a question for the administration or the board? I apologize.
For for the for the for staff, if I put in the next steps that one thing I would like as part of the next step in our consideration of this policy is a version of the policy prepared that removes seclusion as an option. Is that something that can be prepared in advance of our next round of consideration on this?
We can prepare the policy, but I will share that I think, you know, beyond policy to implementation that the concern with that if we moved immediately to immediately to that January 1 is around capacity to provide additional support and resources for staff to implement during those situations where there's this the imminent risk of serious physical harm. And and again, unintended consequences that we don't want to have either is our staff or other students being hurt because the necessary capacity wasn't built prior to us making the shift. We we believe that we've been and I know and I'm hearing it from from you. I'm hearing it from our stakeholders and we certainly honored the request and have the same in goal. We just want to make sure that when we switch that we provide the support. We think that we're being ambitious with prohibiting it in 99% of our existing schools. And we know we need to provide very intense support for those staff there. So I just I just we just have concerns about implementation fidelity and keeping students in safety.
I'm sorry, was the timer going during the answer?
That's her timer.
We're we're alternating staff just to have a bomb hurt.
We're trying to keep our answer quick. Carl, maybe a phase in might even be better versus just a January 1 for those three remaining schools. That would be maybe the nugget I'd say back to you, a phase in for those remaining three schools. Everybody but three January 1 and those other three at a at a time certain.
Here's here's what I'm trying to avoid as a result of us now doing policies together since January on governance is that when we don't give clear direction on what we expect, we don't necessarily get what we're expecting. And then we're delayed further. We don't have the luxury of delay on this issue. So what I'd like to see happen is, fine, you all have presented your view on on how seclusion should be dealt with. I would think that there's a number of there are a number of people on this board that would like to see a more aggressive track of taking seclusion out of our schools. And I'd like to see an alternative to that portion of the policy that does that. How that ends up looking, I'll let you all come up with it and then we can have a conversation about what that more aggressive approach might look like. But I don't want us to be caught here in a week or 10 days or whatever it is without something to discuss, which then forces our hand to do what we may not want to do otherwise. So if I put that as a next step, that's something that's possible?
We'd certainly review it absolutely. We'd certainly review it absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With that, let me remind everyone that the the next step link is in chat. So please make sure that you get your next steps in there so we can review those. Okay, next for callbacks, I have Dr. Anderson followed by Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. Dr. Dr. Boyd, I was just hoping to have some additional clarity regarding the training that is talked about. I believe it's page nine. It doesn't have to be now because I know we have other people who want to speak and we're trying to respect the time. But I'd like to have some sort of specific list of training that staff will be engaged in or has been engaged in. I know men is one of them, all of the trainings that are possible. I'd like to to know what that would what that would be, particularly to de-escalate and escalate. And also who would is who will be involved in that training? In addition to some of the other measures that I talked about earlier, which is how to de-escalate, how to bring staff down who've been involved in this traumatic event, including the administrators? Because they, while they may serve as counsel to the rest of the staff, but that they've also have been traumatized by the situation. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
Thanks. Just a few things to respond to Mr. Frisch's thoughts. I wondered about the idea of sunsetting this policy. If we were to approve the policy for a year that expires on December 31 of 2021, then that would force us to reexamine our data again and where we are and how we move forward together. So I'm just a proposal to throw out there to the group as a as a possible way to get at, I think, where Mr. Frisch is trying to get. The second piece is I wanted to ask Dr. Braybrand, will there be budget line items to specifically address this?
I'm certainly going to be talking to Dr. Boyd about that. So my quick answer is I think yes, this is a top priority. And Dr. Boyd needs to let me know what additional resources she needs. We did put some additional resources in two or three years ago, the additional bits, which we already referenced, you heard about. But I would be talking to her and I would use that to inform the budget that I present next month.
Yeah, I would just say like even with our bits and our PSLs trying to get on their calendar, when you have a situation happen, you know, for us with a particular child that I was an advocate for, it took us 15 days to even get on the schedule. So the length of time from the incident to being able to come up with a plan together of what to do was it was not good. My other question then to Dr. Boyd, I so appreciate that you are continuing to talk about how the input has sort of modified a little bit the plan. Do you have a date where you would put the a new draft where it would be posted with the revisions?
We will probably have the the revisions completed. We just need to do some edit camera checks because we've incorporated the updates already. So prior to the end of the week, we should be able to post that revised policy for your view.
Awesome. I think that would be so helpful with the public comment. And then the last is there's a piece in the state regs about parents' ability to opt out if restraint and seclusion is contraindicated by a physician or a psychiatrist. And so I just wanted to ask about how that's communicated to parents in the IP process and to IP teams? Because I know this is a new conversation that I think a lot of us are having.
Sure. And I and I think a similar question came up on last evening at our at our forum. And I did reach out to to Mr. Foster. So, Mr. Foster, do you want to weigh in? The question specifically that was raised on last evening was if a if a parent or an IP team includes in the IP that a student couldn't be restrained or secluded, would that happen? And I did reach out to Mr. Foster last evening. So I would invite his voice into the room.
Yeah, I want to look at that very closely because, you know, obviously each IP is specific to that individual student. And and so I'm not saying no, Ms. Cohen, but I I just I'm not comfortable because I haven't had time to look at the question closely, just answering off the cuff here this afternoon. So, you know, we can look into that important issue you raised and and get back with you and the remainder of the board.
Sure, I think just figuring out what's the chain of how that's communicated is is super important and ACSD as well. Thanks so much. That's it for me.
Okay, next I have Ms. Amish followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. So just to clarify, these policies, whatever we come up with, would take in would be taking effect the year after anyway, right? Just to clarify.
Dr. Boyd, it's January 1 of this coming year, correct?
Correct. So January 1, 2021.
So the the sunset idea Ms. Cohen is talking about, Ms. Amish, if that's where your mind was going, would be saying the policy is effective for for the 21, really for 21 and at the end, either of end of a school year or the end of a calendar year that it would be reviewed again.
Yeah, okay. I I because I I mean, I have questions. I think you all know at this point that I am in favor of banning seclusion everywhere in our schools. But given that, and I'm happy to hear that's the collective vision of where everyone wants to go. Given that we are doing it for 99% of our schools, to your point, Dr. Boyd, I'm still not convinced that we can't do whatever else, given that, I mean, not only is the trauma, you know, it takes years to deconstruct if we have an opportunity to do something about it. But we've, you know, we we didn't have pilots in those other schools, right? But we're able to achieve that and they could be roped into the PD, whatever we're going to implement. And then, you know, whatever measures are going to be taken. Can you help me better understand what includes that?
Sure, absolutely. So it is, as Ms. Bukarski, I believe she shared earlier, and we talked a little bit earlier with Dr. Braybrand. And for us to support the schools where we're prohibiting this seclusion now, we are going to be reallocating or reprioritizing the services that the bits in ABA's coaches and our intensive support teams provide. So how they provide service is going to be different to support this need for coaching. You know, all of our staff will be getting universal coaching, excuse me, universal professional development around de-escalation and conflict resolution, positive behavior, individual supports and all of those things. But that extra support that's needed as a practitioner to have somebody in there coaching with you working side by side with those specific students so that you know what are those specific evidence based practices? There's a lot out there, but what specifically is going to be effective and support Michelle, which may be very different from Scott and different from Frank? So to say capacity, staff capacity to be able to do that and provide that level of intensity right now also at those other three sites where there would be a need and a very targeted need around some of our students with more significant needs and medical considerations.
Okay, I I mean, and what challenges does that pose from a, you know, disparity or inconsistency perspective? I mean, how are we going to ensure, you know, there's not drastically disparate outcomes for special needs students depending on what school they're in? You're muted, Dr. Boyd.
I thought I was doing so good. Our our definition of serious physical harm truly and imminent risk is truly a very, very high threshold. And so again, as we make sure that seclusion and physical restraint is only implemented in those situations, I think we're again taking some some forward movement here because we provided a very high threshold above and beyond what's in the state regulation with the definitions that we outlined there. So I think that helps us to walk in the right direction, but I certainly do hear your intent and your desire.
Yeah, because I think, you know, you spoke earlier to having reviewed some of the work that other states or other jurisdictions have done to get us there. I I think, you know, I I'm at a point where I would support certainly what was mentioned in potentially pushing the the date for when we do this and starting maybe the next school year. But would love to hear my the thoughts of my colleagues as well about just, you know, ACSD unanimously supported this, so I do feel strongly. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Great, thank you. I just want to quickly say that I think it's really important. Dr. Braybrand, I know that SEPTA gave us a detailed document yesterday, Monday, November 3, with their suggested recommendations to improving the schoolwork policy. So as you mentioned to Mr. Frisch and as Dr. Boyd mentioned, getting a revised policy by Friday, it would be my request that a crosswalk be done with the recommendations they suggest and which ones you're going to incorporate and not incorporate so that the board can understand where, if any disconnect still remains when we have the next revision. In the end, as I noted, this policy will be owned and belongs to the board. To what Ms. Cohen said, I actually think that we don't necessarily have to sunset this and wait until next December. What we could do is make sure that what we pass on the 17th meets the minimum state requirements. And then where the board is saying we need further alignment with our key stakeholders or where we're talking about today, but we want to fine tune and finish up. Having a robust policy could then be done in January. There's nothing that says with any policy that we touch it once and then that's the end of it. I do think if we wanted to bring it back for one final revision, it's just that we have to make sure we meet the state minimum requirement. And that would be my advocacy for those two things.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And we have we have made notations just right on the document. So it's not a problem to create a crosswalk. We can certainly do that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Karen Corbett Sanders and then Ms. Bukarski.
Great, and thank you. One of the one of my points of advocacy earlier on was in the capstone true stating our intent to get rid of seclusion and really focusing on behavioral support. So I think that that ties nicely into much of the conversation we are having now about how to do that. The second piece is I'd like to bring everybody's attention to the notifications and reporting section on page six and seven, specifically under D, after an incident of physical restraint. I think it should apply to both physical restraint, after an incident of physical restraint. And then it talks about the description of the incident, but it doesn't go into detail of what the triggering acts were. And so I would like us to be much more explicit in the process for unpacking incidences to identify what are those triggering events so that the behavioral plan can be put in place or that people know that if you do certain things, then a child reacts in a certain way. And so I would like to see that fleshed out a little bit more on how to identify what those triggering events are. And, Dr. Boyd, do you have any comments on that?
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. We can certainly add it to the policy. We are in the process actually now of modifying our report form so that it specifically requests information around the antecedent. So it's not a problem to just go ahead and incorporate that into the policy as well. Because that's what we're looking for as we provide support. That that data is key as we look at what supports may be needed for for supporting the students at classroom or school.
Thank you.
Are you done, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I I'd rather get us to next step.
Ms. Bukarski?
Okay, thank you. Quickly, just wanted to ask a question that somebody or a comment that was made to me about crisis response teams, which I don't know that much about and what their role, if any, would be as part of this policy. Can you can somebody address that, please?
Sure, thank you. And I'll certainly invite Mr. Bloom. They've been so quiet today. I don't want to be overlooked. So, Mr. Bloom, I'll go ahead and give you the microphone.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So in our original guidelines that we developed in 2012, we did recommend that every school create what we called a crisis support team. And it was a group of three to five individuals that were trained in the sort of advanced techniques, what the state is now calling the advanced training or level two training. So these are primarily staff that have been trained in the MANTSS system and/or professional crisis management, PCM. And so we still feel as a school division that schools should have a response team of, again, a group of individuals that have had this advanced training that are pair that are prepared and trained to respond in an emergency situation. And I think that the language in the regulations from the state is intended to make sure that when and if staff have to intervene in an emergency, that staff who are intervening have been trained in the advanced training. And so I still think that the crisis support teams will have a role to play in our schools in making sure and training that we have trained staff that are able to respond when needed.
So is that part of the? So is that part of the policy as written? Is that clear or did I overlook that?
So in the policy, Ms. Pakarski, I'll be rude to the new round in a time. So what Mr. Bloom just described was the initial implementation of our crisis response teams. And in the policy, and actually, well, excuse me, in the presentation, we referenced those teams because they have that advanced training, not just for the physical pieces, but also those are the folks that we want to look to be those building level experts, if you will. So you know, we've talked about providing some very tiered levels of support with our ABA coaches and our BICs, but you want to make sure that you have building level experts building your capacity. So those are the folks, because they're building level staff. They may be teachers, they may be counselors. Those are going to be our go-to experts in the building if teachers have questions, if support staff have questions. And so revamping that now, again, based on our shift, we have to shift also how we provide support.
Okay, thank you. That's more clear. So will every school have this team?
Correct, every school. Correct. And these are, just to be clear, every school will have a crisis response team, and these are from their existing staff. So these are not additional persons in the building, the existing staff at the building that have this role and are provided that additional support to be able to be a resource to other staff in the building.
Okay, but I think right now we don't have those in every school, which is, you know, would be an issue, especially as we try to implement some of these, you know, practices. I mean, every school would need to have access to this.
Absolutely.
Expertise, so, okay. The other last comment that I have, I think, you know, from reading this policy, I think stakeholders may feel some angst that maybe a placement decisions will be made, you know, based on the fact that we're only allowing restraint and seclusion in these three sites. And, you know, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I think we have to be very, very sensitive to that fear of our parents.
Absolutely. You said it so eloquently. Again, physical restraint and seclusion are only, again, in those, as we talk about protracted limb loss, risk of death. And so this is a response to emergency situations. This is not a teaching technique. We're going to expect that all of our staff are able to build those skills of students in all schools. And so this is, it is not our intent that students will be, you know, IAP meetings will be had to say, you got to go to King Kilmer Burke so that this can occur. Because again, it's only a rare instance and we need to build across the board our students' capacity to re-regulate if they're escalated, but also for us to address those skill gaps that are manifest themselves in this response. So we'll be looking at that, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, it is your turn.
Yeah, I think I'm the last one for go-back. But do we want to stop and take a vote to let me speak my go-back? Or do we want to go ahead and let me speak and then see where we're at?
You're the last.
Have your 90 seconds. And then can we bring up the next step for 10 minutes and have a hard stop at 5:15? Would that be all right? Or do we need to vote at 5?
I believe the motion has voted 5, but if no one wants to stop it, then I would suggest we make an alternate motion that we finish our go-backs and then we bring up our next steps and have a hard stop maybe at 5:20. That gives time to change to the budget meeting.
If you want to confirm a 5:20 stop, that's fine with me.
At least since we had a motion before, we may have to have a second motion before we continue.
Okay. Ms. Kowfax, do you have a comment or question?
I have your mic on. I don't.
So if I make a motion to continue to, I had a motion for all to continue to 5:20. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, can we, sorry, I'm taking over the meeting.
Okay, could I see a show of hands of people that would support the motion to continue to 5:20, please? Okay, so I see we have Mr. Frisch, Ms. Miren, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Zeiser Heizer, myself, Ms. Omech, Ms. Kies-Gamara, Ms. Cohen, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Kowfax. So that motion will carry. Ms. Zeiser Heizer, could you make your, close this out with the go-back, please?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I wanted to follow up very quickly on what I ended with on page eight and nine, when we talk about the principal debrief after the restraint seclusion with both the team as well as with the student, as well as any potential follow-up IAP, BIP, 504 meetings. I would like to discuss, in addition to talking about the use of it, whether it was in compliance or how to prevent future native restraint or seclusion, a, you know, discussion about the trauma that it caused. And I like to specify that the trauma would also be discussed in the follow-up, in particular with the principal, as well as any meetings with the students, not just the positive behavior. So if someone could address whether we could add following up with the trauma on page eight, E and F?
Ms. Zeiser Heizer, can you just clarify? I was trying to listen and take some notes at the same time. Can you clarify if you're referring to the trauma being addressed with the staff or trauma being addressed with the student? I just want to try and understand correctly.
Both. I mean, it's traumatic for the staff, traumatic for the student. I think that should be specified in both E and F, that that's part of the conversation going forward, how to address the trauma that was caused.
And I think we would certainly pull on our social workers to be able to provide some guidance and training. Things are manifested so differently from one student to another student. And so while trauma certainly could have occurred and happened with one student and may not have occurred with another, and we just want to make sure that our principals, as they're approaching it with that trauma-form lens, because sometimes you just don't know what students or staff have experienced, right? So you're always approaching it with the trauma-form lens, but I'm just not sure, would we be going outside of their wheelhouse to do, you know, more direct counseling with students around trauma and things like that? And I know Dr. Brabran put his camera on, so that's a sign he has something to add.
I think what you're just saying is you want to check to assess for trauma. If there is trauma, it may not, every incident may not be a trauma incident, but that we're checking for it when we're doing this incident review for both staff, students, or both. And so if that, I see the thumbs up. Let me work with Michelle about how we can reflect that so that at least the check, even if it's not every incident, is a trauma incident.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, I agree. Just check for it, someone look for it so we can address it so it doesn't get overlooked. Because sometimes further behaviors can be caused as a result of that trauma and that can get missed as we're trying to deal with additional behaviors.
Right, right.
That's what you're trying to get at. Thank you. One other, I just want to make a real quick statement. We need to be really careful. I understand that we're banning seclusion in 99% of the schools. My understanding is that three schools that still have seclusion account for something like 30 or 40% of the seclusion cases. So I think we need to be careful with throwing out the 99% number. And also on page six, section 6C and 7C is inconsistent. One talks about the minute that you talked about, Dr. Boyd, and the other one does not talk about the minute. So you may want to just clarify those inconsistencies. And I wanted to put a plug in for the trusted adult. I do not think we should have students having to lead that. I think that should be, that's a crucial sense of this. The student can pick it, but if they're non-verbal, unable to identify, we should turn to the family or the case manager. This is, I think, a crucial, crucial piece. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I have two board members with their hands up, Ms. Omech and Ms. McLaughlin. Is that still from our vote? Okay, great. Okay, let's take a look at the next steps. Ms. Malberg is a possible, it's up on the screen.
I'm getting it.
Thank you. Okay, if board members, if you could take a minute on staff to take a look through these next steps from this first page here and see, let's, I would hope not try to wordsmith them incredibly, but if there's something that you don't understand, have an issue with, let us know.
Is there a way, and Michelle, I don't know whether you can either. Like, I've read the first six or so by Karen Corbett Sanders, and then I can't read the rest of them. Or did you send the link out already? I guess I could look at the link. Michelle, are you looking at the link or just what's on the screen?
I just opened the link.
The link is in chat.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to scroll up, though, so that the public can see the next step list? Ms. Malberg, do we need to show that whole list?
I don't know if that's possible.
Oh, I was, we could scroll through it. I don't know that you can show the whole list at one time. Do we need to have the public see all of them today? We have discussion at the end of each of our meetings.
What we're doing is.
Ms. Tolan, I do have a question. I raised my hand.
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Thank you. I know that we talked extensively about same-day notification, and I'm trying to figure out, while it's listed as the next step, that wouldn't necessarily help the superintendent know if there's seven or more board members that want to see that in the policy that will vote on December 17th. So I'm wondering if that is something we need to formally give direction as a board to make that change. I really prefer not to be sitting at the board table rehashing it since we've spent all of today talking about it.
Dr. Brabran, do you feel like you need more direct information on that? Or having listened to everyone's comments through the day, do you feel like you could be bored with that?
You know, I, Dr. Board, do you have an opinion about that?
I think we can work to figure out a way to make it occur on the same day. We'll work with our, we'll work with the teams for that outcome. So I think we can incorporate, we just need to fine tune.
The, my, Dr. Boyd, I've read all the next steps, and I only have one comment, and it's Ms. Omech. Ms. Omech, I saw another board member said do a crosswalk of the ACSD recommendations, and then you said include all of them that are unanimous. I'd like to leave a little room to review those with Dr. Boyd before saying that I would include all of them. Just to be honest, I haven't sat with her to look through each one of those specific recommendations. I'd certainly consider reviewing and incorporating all the unanimous ones. But I don't want to commit to it here and give a false sense without having looked at them with Dr. Boyd.
Yeah, because I know they've been there for a while, but point taken. I think maybe we can say prepare language for them because my concern would be for us to have, you know, for you guys to have a conversation maybe and consider yes or no on certain ones where the board feels strongly. And all of our representatives voted in favor, and then we don't have the prepared language or, you know, structure to vote on.
So maybe, maybe just to take that last next step, perhaps if we do the crosswalk and we're not including something, what I hear you saying is that we would draft language that a board member, or in fact, you as a board member could use to make a motion.
Yeah, that would make sense for you guys, yeah.
Okay, I can work with that. We can work with that.
Ms. McLaughlin, was your question answered? Did you have another comment?
My question wasn't answered entirely. I mean, I do understand Dr. Brabran and Dr. Boyd saying that they just want to visit with their administrative staff and make sure everything's okay about same-day notification. But I just thought it would be helpful because, again, this is our school board policy. It's not the superintendent's regulation. If we need to have seven of us just making clear, that's the direction that we'd like to go. And then the second piece was, I have in the next steps about the SEPTA November 30th recommendations that's similar to Ms. Omech's request for ACSD. And I would just say how Dr. Brabran captured it would be my hope, that incorporate what they choose to incorporate in anything that they are not going to incorporate from the SEPTA recommendations would then, I'd said, provide a rationale for why they're not doing it. But obviously, preparing amendments that board members can and then use the language, at least we need to know which ones are not in there and why, so we can make motions as needed.
Dr. Brabran and Dr. Boyd, is that clear?
Yeah, I think I want to go back on the first one, though, to say, in the end, it's really the board's comfort. Does the board want to be clear about same-day? That's what Ms. McLaughlin's asking. So I think that's really a board question more than my opinion. It's how strongly the board feels you need to leave, Dr. Boyd and I, with the understanding about that issue. I think we both heard you and we would work to do it, but it's more, I think, the board's appetite to be clear about it to the board or for the community or, you know, to stakeholders.
Yeah, Dr. Brabran, you captured it exactly. It's one thing for you to hear some of us. I just think as a board, we need to understand if we don't leave today with seven or more of us saying we're clear, it needs to be same-day, then we will find ourselves potentially talking about this yet again at the board table, which could make for a very long night. And I'd like to avoid that.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Zeiser Heizer.
Thanks. Is it possible to get consensus? To, I know we're not taking entertaining motions today, but just to get a consensus of the board, there is seven or more of us who want same-day notifications so Dr. Brabran and Dr. Boyd can go forward with that.
Thank you. That's my request to both meeting managers.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, do you have a comment?
Yeah, along those lines, I think that's why we have the next steps up there. And if the individual board members have significant concerns of anything listed, I actually am very comfortable with the same-day notice. I think that every member of this, almost every member of this board spoke to the same-day notice. So I hope that that guidance is supported.
Mr. Frisch?
I'm hoping to spare some time here. There are roughly 30 next steps on the page. Perhaps we could get a baseline of support that the superintendent could use to interpret for the policymaking simply by reading each one and asking for any objections and simply tallying those or asking for all the support. And I think that we would probably find that for most of these, there's near unanimous support. We just have to do it and skip the talking so that we can do it. Otherwise, we're not going to meet this timeline that we put out.
Love that.
Okay, do you want me to read these, Dr. Brabran? Okay, do you want me to read these, Dr. Braybrand? Or would you like to read them?
Ms. Tolan, I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, Dr. Anderson. Go ahead.
If it would help in any way, I added our names to the other columns so people can just go through and put a yes in the areas in which they support. We can all do this on our own and it should take however long it takes all of us to type in yes or no for each of the next steps. So that way, if they don't necessarily have to be read out loud, people can just put yeses or nos.
Even better.
So if you want to just go in, you'll be able to see that.
Great idea. Okay, so with that, Ms. Omech, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I, I wanted to suggest a modification to one of them, but given this new procedure, I, that isn't fair for me to share. I, I just wanted to ask Dr. Anderson if you were willing to provide a little more specificity on the request for the training so that it's perhaps the timetable or more detailed plans about that, given that we're relying so heavily on professional development.
I think Ms. Omech, I'm, I'm so sorry. May I be recognized, Ms. Tolan?
Yes, please.
This one is just information gathering. I, I want to know what is being provided and to whom. And that information will move me into whatever my next steps are. I, I don't know what's provided, so it's hard for me to make a timeline determination.
Okay, thanks.
All right, team, it is 5:21. So we are now one minute past our deadline. So I would like to have each person, you know, go in, make their checkmarks so that we have clear direction for staff and allow the group that needs to move on to their next meeting of the day to go ahead and do that. I don't see any additional hands. So Anderson, unless you have anything else, I think we can go ahead and adjourn this work session. All right, have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you.
All of the great work.
Ms. Tolan, when, when, when are we supposed to? I mean, I'm doing this document right now, but when, when are we making sure that?
By 9:00 AM tomorrow.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody was clear on how soon we got to provide the feedback to Dr. Braybrand and our chair and vice chair.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Just one question, if I may. Will, will these next steps be published or posted for the community?
Yes, I believe so.
All next, yes, all next steps are always published for the community. They're always on the web and on board docs, along with the responses.
Is it, I'm just wondering if there's a way that in light of this meeting and the importance of this to the community, if there, we might think about a more prominent way. I've heard a number of, and I don't want to delay things, but, you know, sometimes we have to fish quite a bit to find information related to what we just discussed. So if there was a way, you know, talking about this meeting and having the next steps, that might be helpful.
Do you want the next step posted with the, the meeting date? And we do that as a separate document, Ms. Malberg?
We will do whatever the board directs us to do.
Okay, so can we say for these particular next steps that after these are filled out by 9:00 AM tomorrow, that this chart will be posted on board docs along with the materials for the meeting today? Do I need to take a vote on that?
I don't think so. That's easy. Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Okay, that's what we'll do then. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Tolan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, have a nice evening.